Good morning, everyone. The September 4th, 2013 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed-caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, some customers of Cox Communications who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital, Channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers, out to the mess, and then proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with our marshals or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff up front here. If you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered our chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Chaplain Victoria Cant, Messages of Faith Ministries, and remain standing for the pledge?
For those who wish to bow their head and join in prayer, I pray, Almighty God, I come before you this day, and I ask for wisdom to be poured out upon those in leadership, and for blessings upon the city of Las Vegas, Office of the Mayor, and City Council. Let us reflect and pray on the heart for doing good, for love that oversees, the worthiness of governance, and the revelation for direction. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain, and we will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the How nice to see everybody. First of all, before we proceed with the ceremonial portion, I do want to let you know the councilwoman, Tarkanian, has been excused. She's unable to join us, and for a very good reason, for she's on her way to Massachusetts for her husband, our legendary Jerry Tarkanian, who's going to be inducted into the Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame. Jerry, as you all know, is our beloved coach of the University of Nevada Las Vegas Rebels who cut his teeth coaching at Riverside City College. He moved on to success with his coaching then at Long Beach State, using mostly junior college transfers. Jerry Tarkanian's signature moment came in 1990 when UNLV, of course, won the great National NCAA Championship with the talents of Stacy Augman, Larry Johnson, Anderson Hunt, Greg Anthony, and others. And who can forget the day in 1990 when the UNLV Run-In Rebels defeated Duke 103 to 73, the NCAA title game? In 1991, the Run-In Rebels ran their record to 34 and zip to become the first team since Indian. Since Indian, to go undefeated? Indian? Indiana. Right, thank you. I read exactly what was here. Jerry Indian. Okay, Jerry, and you see with the rise I got from Chase back here. There's a thing called proofreading. Okay. Jerry established a staggering 784, 202, record in his 31 years as head coach, and we certainly offer our congratulations to our councilwoman and Jerry Tarkanian on this amazing achievement and their amazing achievements, and wish them well. So, this is exciting. Or did I criticize him incorrectly and it came out of the office? Indian. Okay. Never point to anybody, it's always here, it's supposed to be. Okay, the ceremonial portion of the agenda, and for our first item today, Councilman Coffin, on behalf of Councilwoman Tarkanian, is going to recognize September Citizen of the Month.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. We're off to a bad day here, I can see with all our tongue-twisters. Well, we're missing Councilwoman Tarkanian today, but we're trying to fill in where we can. We all wish we were back there, wishing Jerry, you know, his happy induction into the Hall of Fame. Anyway, Lois asked me to present the Citizens of the Month this time, and I think it's a real worthy pair of people this time. Elizabeth Menya and Gabriel Sands are a unique team, they've been together for 30 years now. And they came here as investors in 2004, and like so many people, they stayed. When the economic crisis hit, they looked for something to do to improve our community, and in 2009, they founded a sports center where they really, it's called, it's in the Keen neighborhood, understand, the keeping everyone's eyes on the neighborhood, a very good acronym. But their indoor soccer center at 3,055 South Valley View is a sight to behold and a great place to go when the kids are there. Everybody's having a lot of fun. It's co-ed, adult, and kids. And they're having a big party for Mexican Independence Day coming up soon, and they've had a back-to-school fair. So to fill other needs in the Hispanic community, and by the way, we're talking about the community again south of Sahara, not in Ward 3, but rather in Ward 1, which is an area that frequently is not understood to be a heavily Latino area, well, many countries, of course, but the important thing is that it's an essential part of our city, and many people think the city boundaries stop at Sahara, but they don't. In this particular case, on the west side of Interstate 15, in many places, they go south, and of course, we take care of everyone in these communities. So Gabriel and Elizabeth reached out to the Police Athletic League to help inner-city kids with tutoring and private mentoring. They donated the venue to the Jump for Joy Foundation, whose objective is to fight obesity. And they're working with the Never Give Up Foundation that assists lower-income families to help kids with disabilities to succeed. Elizabeth and Gabriel say we love and enjoy what we do, and without a doubt, it shows in their value of service to the community and to others. So we would like to invite them up, if they could please come and join us here at the podium. Elizabeth? Gabriel?
Thank you so much, congratulations.
How about saying a couple of words about what you do? Did you both want to speak, or did you choose someone that might enjoy that? Okay, Gabriel.
I would like to thank the council for this recognition. Councilwoman Tarkanian is not here. Excuse me, I'm a choca probably. We love what we do, we want to serve our community, make it a better, safer place to live and work for our Hispanic community. I can't say much more, but thank you so much, Mayor, Councilwoman. We would like to continue what we're doing. With the help of Councilwoman Tarkanian, we plan to continue working and making Ward 1 a better and safer community for all.
Those are so heartfelt words. And the mayor is holding Citizen of the Month presentation for you, for you both. You're both going to receive one. So we're delighted, and we're going to have a picture with you. Yes, and Gabriel, I know, and Elizabeth, you want to introduce your family, they could stand up in the audience because you take the whole second row. Come on, stand up. You have a wonderful family here, three great-looking sons. Your mom is here, Elizabeth? Your mom is here? Okay. And Gabriel, is this your brother?
Yes, it is.
Well, okay. Okay, please introduce everybody.
Yes, I have my brother, Abraham, who is a general manager for the indoor soccer center. My mother-in-law, my son, who is a second-year UNLV. My son, Dorian, who is a Palo Verde soccer stand-up. My son, Octavius, and my beautiful wife, Elizabeth.
Well done, well done. In front of a crowd, it's easy to forget everybody's names, I know. Okay, we're going to have a picture, we'd be honored to have a picture with you in front of the sign right there that says Citizen of the Month. And that sign is going to be placed right outside our building, on Main Street, facing south, so you can drive by and tell all your friends to drive by and see that you are honored by us. Come on, let's go take a picture.
Grandma, this was for you. You are the one. Congratulations. You know that, right? The power's in the grandma, always. Thank you, and congratulations. Oh, I got another high five. How many grandmas do we have here? Hands up. Where are our grandmas? Too young. Okay, anyway, congratulations, we're so proud of you. For our next item, I'd like to invite our Information Technologies Director, Joe Marsala, to join us at the podium. Where are you? Hiding over on the left side, last time you were on the right side. Well, how wonderful, no wonder. Yes. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which, as you know, stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. They build our community, make life so much better, not only for themselves, but for all of us. I'm proud to announce that the employee of the month is Erin Wells. Erin, we welcome you up here, we thank you, so proud. Erin is a Systems Administration Specialist with the Information Technologies Department and has been with the city for 21 years, so she must have been hired in high school. Erin Wells has provided years of reliable, thoughtful assistance for wired and wireless communications for the city. She's implemented wireless coverage for our fire department, improving access to training. The big challenge for Erin was that the communications infrastructure at some of the older fire stations was extremely outdated. Some were still operating at the 2004 technology level, which means the fire personnel would not be able to capitalize on smart technologies which were available through tablets and phones. Erin took the initiative and saw this as an opportunity to enhance public safety communications, and as a result, she went about upgrading the wireless access points at the fire stations. Now, fire personnel can take advantage of training on their e-devices without having to drive to the fire training center located on Mojave. This not only saves time and money, but it keeps our units in service all the time responding to our emergency calls. Erin has also played a large role in getting technology up and running at Las Vegas, pardon me, I'm a righty, so the left hand doesn't work, okay, enough. Running at the Las Vegas Valley Emergency Management Center. This facility is key to protecting the city residents and visitors, businesses, and infrastructure. In the event of any emergency, it becomes the region's nerve center, and it would not be operational without Erin's work. Erin's always willing to help fellow employees too, and always gives her very best effort. So on behalf of the entire City Council, it's a huge pleasure to name Erin the Employee of the Month. And along with this award, Erin has received a $100 Visa gift card, compliments of One Nevada Credit Union, a $100 gift card from Mundo Restaurant. In addition, a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of her choice by Super Pawn. She's also received various other awards from the city and council that recognizes her great work. Finally, to our left, you will see, is it there, a street sign with Erin's name on it that's posted in front of City Hall on Main Street. And I'd like Joe, our head of IT, to say a few words, and then Erin, we'd love to hear from you too. So Joe, I know you're just very proud.
Oh, very proud. Erin has been always a thoughtful businessperson, so she'll look at a problem from a business perspective and then take some very complicated technical systems and actually solve problems. So we're really proud of what she does, and we wanted to thank the fire department for recognizing her talent and expertise. And this is not the first time she's been Citizen of the Month. In 1997, she was the Citizen of the Month. And Erin, I think you've got some stories about 1997. Please.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you to everyone who, you know, for the great gifts and book and, sorry. Anyway, I wanted to say thank you, and also thank you to Fire for the nomination. Dan Cooper, I work with, and he kind of single-handedly holds up the department as far as IT, you know, at Fire. But yeah, we, back in 97, as Joe mentioned, I was Employee of the Month one other time, and that was kind of interesting because I started in 92, and back then, anyone who wanted to do any research on computer had to use a CompuServe account and a dial-up modem. Any correspondence was, you know, via snail mail. And when Joe came along and was our CIO, he lobbied for an Internet connection, and so I was like, hey, I want to volunteer for that project and put that in. So that was, as a result, that was the first, as soon as everybody started up their browsers and they were able to send mail outside the city, that was like, you know, we were, you know, off to the races. Anyway, I just, I've been lucky, I've been able to work on a lot of interesting technology, and it hasn't slowed down, it just gets better and better. And thank you to everybody.
Thank you. We congratulate you. I know the council does too, and for some of us who are a little challenged in the technology area, I mean, I envy you, and I know what's coming in the future none of us can even imagine now, and how exciting for you to have this staying power. So how wonderful to be recognized twice. It keeps you young working at City Hall, I know that for a fact. And so if you would, Councilman Coffin, our Employee of the Month, and can we all congregate over behind Erin's nice four, five-letter names, easy signature, not these long ones, And congratulations. Hang tough with us. Joe, I know you're so proud, you've got a great department, and we're all learning slowly, slowly. Okay, and for our next item, that we have Councilman Coffins returning to the podium here to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to do something different today, a little bit different anyway, because really, sometimes it is, the thought du jour is to bring up the Mayacanos and have them dance, you know? Everybody thinks of September as the month where the Mexicans celebrate their independence from Spain. But on the other hand, really nationally, from September 15th to October 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month, started by President Johnson and greatly expanded by President Reagan when he was there. And the reason is, is that there are so many things to celebrate about the Latin culture. And so rather than having a folkloric dance today, we're going, we've invited the Puerto Rican community to send some representatives to visit because it's a good time to think about, and we won't make this long, but it's a good time to think about the fact that independence from Spain is not the only issue on the plate here. Some countries in Latin America have already celebrated their 200th anniversary because they received independence at a time when France occupied Spain and captured the king. And capturing the king, that pretty well paralyzed their armed forces, and so a number of countries actually became free of colonization in 1810, 1811, in that era. Then 1815, 1816, a number of countries like Mexico won their freedom from Spain, sometimes they did not have to fight for it, and other times they had a small riot in a town, and that created a movement, as in Venezuela, where in the end, it became independence. And so some things are marked by momentous grave moments, and other times, it's kind of like a small riot turns into independence. You can't ever tell, and I think that's a good reason for everybody to understand Latin American politics, because not every country's the same. Although most migrants to this country are from Mexico, in fact, they're from many, many countries, let's just say 20 Latin countries, for round figures. And I think that it's important to understand that today, we're going to bring up people from Puerto Rico to say a few words, because Puerto Rico is not independent. You know, the famous television station Univision, last year mistakenly congratulated Puerto Rico on its independence, considering that in 1952, Puerto Rico adopted a constitution, which they have today and they live by, but yet the debate still rages in Puerto Rico whether it should be a state and an independent country, or remain a commonwealth as it is today. And so it's a teaching moment for all of us about Latin America, so that's what we're going to use our time for today on Heritage Month. And I'd like to invite Ruben, Ruben Cruz, President of the Puerto Rican Association of Las Vegas, along with some of your members, everybody come on up, to accept a proclamation on behalf of all the Hispanic people living here. You know, even Belize won its independence late, in 1981, from the United Kingdom. So there are all kinds of independence out there. But today is really not so much independence as it is heritage. Latino people make up two-thirds of the population, actually, I think a little more of Ward 3 on the east side of town, but in Wards 1 and Wards 5, actually 45, 46% of the people are of Latino descent. So we really appreciate the contribution that's been made by the community and the leaders of the community who have become so much a part of Las Vegas that they have surpassed the wildest dreams of anybody. We really appreciate you being here. Ruben, would you like to say a few words on behalf?
Yes. I want to thank, hello. I want to thank Councilman Bob Coffin for sponsoring the Puerto Rican Association of Las Vegas for the proclamation. I also want to thank Mayor Carolyn Goodman and the entire City Council. We are very proud to accept the proclamation on behalf of all Hispanics in Las Vegas. The Hispanic population of Las Vegas is diverse and dynamic, as you all know. The Puerto Rican population from Las Vegas is approximately 17,000, but they're scattered all over the area. The Puerto Rican Association of Las Vegas has events every year to raise funds, to give scholarships, and also we give toys Christmas. We have, we are a 501(c)(3) organization, and so if you attend our events, we have an event actually in November 17, where we celebrate the discovery of Puerto Rico at the terrace, 1361 West Warm Springs in Henderson. And there'll be food, Puerto Rican food, Puerto Rican music, Puerto Rican people, and non-Puerto Rican people. So we are very, we would like to invite all to come join us on November 17, it's Sunday, from 5 to 11, 1361 West Warm Springs Road, Henderson. Thank you very much.
Do people need help finding Henderson, Ruben? It's a little town south and east of Las Vegas. Well, I want to make sure that you introduce everybody who's come here today, we've got some wonderful visitors. Please, Ruben, continue to do the honors.
Hi, I'm Angela Benito.
I'm Bill Rosado.
I'm Cindy Sanchez, representing the Puerto Rican Association of Las Vegas.
Former president of the Puerto Rican Association, Judy Fleishman.
Got a beautiful flag.
And now, we have a proclamation for you that we're going to give you, and we'll also gather around for a picture. And it essentially says, we, the mayor and the council, are honored that all Hispanic Latino people could be here, nearly 200,000 in this city. And the Puerto Rican Association of Las Vegas provides an opportunity for Hispanics, Latinos residing in Southern Nevada to express their loyalty to this country and their homeland. Many, many thousands of Puerto Ricans serve in our military, and that is an important thing. And one or two of my drill sergeants were Puerto Rican when I was stationed over in the east coast. We, the mayor and the city council of the city of Las Vegas, in honor of the Hispanics, Latino-Americans in the city of Las Vegas, proudly proclaim September 15, 2013, to October 15, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Congratulations to everybody, to Puerto Rico, and to all the other countries represented here in Las Vegas. Here is, okay? Now let's take a picture with the council. Your Honor, when I give this back to you, I just have to say, I wonder what their meetings are like, you know? Somebody wants statehood, somebody wants independence, somebody wants to, you know, be a country, I kind of wonder where it all ends up sometimes. I don't want to be around at the end of the meetings.
Councilman Beers just said...
Probably kind of like a city council meeting.
Or a county commission meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin. And for our final item, Mayor Protam Anthony, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. It is my honor today to recognize the United States Tennis Association of Nevada, and the reason I am recognizing them today is because they are offering free tennis lessons for anyone in the state of Nevada during the month of September. And I'd like to ask the following people to come down and be recognized, are the ones that are very instrumental in putting this together. The president of the United States Tennis Association of Nevada, Tim Blinkiron, the manager of the United States Tennis Association... manager of the United States Tennis Association, Maureen Caruso, the adult league coordinator, Mary Maragos, and the founder of Serves for Cancer, Rob Keenus. If you could all come down here, and please give them a nice round of applause. So, not only is the United States Tennis Association of Nevada providing free tennis clinics for anyone from ages three to adult, but they're also offering a free tennis racket, if you need one, and free Nevada Tennis Association memberships during the month of September. These tennis clinics are going to be offered all over the valley, from All-American Park to Canyon Country Club, to the Darling Tennis Center, to Sunset Park, and Lorenzi Racket Club, just to mention a couple of them. So they're very, very convenient. This is a great way to learn a new sport, start a new sport, great way to exercise, and it's a great way to select the next Andre Agassi of Las Vegas, the next superstar in tennis. So I'd like to ask the President, Tim Blinkiron, just to say a couple of words about what's going on.
Thanks very much. Good morning, everybody. My name's Tim Blinkiron, I'm the President of the United States Tennis Association, and we are very excited to kick off Free Tennis Month here in Las Vegas in the month of September. This was really the vision of our executive director, Ryan Woolfington, and our staff, who are behind us right now. We have Mark and Maureen, Rob Keenus, who's not staff, but I'll get on to that in a minute, Mary and Janay, I think I've got everybody, to offer free tennis to the city of Las Vegas. And if you know of anybody that you think, you know, it really caters to everybody, it's not just for juniors, it's for adults as well. And if you know anyone who might want to be involved in this program, they just call the United States Tennis Association office, and we'll give them a free membership and...
Phone number and website?
792-8384, if you want to take a note of that right now. And they will give you...
Free tennis at USTA Nevada.
Oh, it's on this, I guess the details are on this, thanks for that. A lot of people were involved in making this happen, and I just want to say a couple thank yous. Mayor Carolyn Goodman, you'll see pretty soon is the face of this program, did some great commercials, yeah, that was fantastic.
Great tennis player, very briefly.
And I know she's been in tennis for a while, I think Ross played tennis, and she was involved in the tennis program at the Meadow School, so she's been a huge advocate for us, and we thank you very much, that was fantastic. Stavros, next to me, has been fantastic, Ricky Barlow, Lois Tarkanian, who unfortunately is not here today, Bob Beers, and Lonny Zimmerman as well, has been fantastic in helping kick off this program. Also, in the month of September, and I don't want to take up too much time, but we have a professional women's tournament from the 22nd to the 29th of September. If you're interested in seeing some of the next up-and-comers on the women's tour, that'll be, I believe, at Darling Tennis Center. And we also have the Open Nationals, but I'm going to hand that over to Rob Keenus to give us some details on that.
Hello, everybody. For Open Nationals, it's for open men, women, and 5.5 guys, and it'll be at the Darling Tennis Center at the same time as the women's tournament, so it's September 27th to 29th. Come out and watch the tennis, it's a lot of fun.
I also want to recognize Rob here, he's the founder of Serves for Cancer, and is coordinating the Adult National Championship to Benefit Cancer at the Darling Tennis Center in September. So did you want to talk a little bit about that?
Happy to say a couple of words. I'm a nine-year cancer survivor, and so what we do is we host tennis-themed cancer, or tennis-themed events that benefit cancer research through the American Cancer Society. The one here in, at the end of September is one of those, but we do them in the US, EU, and the UK.
Great, great, thanks for doing that, appreciate it. So with that, Tim, I'd like to present you a proclamation on behalf of the mayor and the entire city council. I'd like to proclaim September 4, 2013, as United States Tennis Association Nevada Day in the city of Las Vegas, and congratulations.
This is really exciting. And so just remember, everybody, take tennis lessons and get your children or grandchildren playing. It's a wonderful sport, keeps all of us out of trouble when we're young, did keep my children out of trouble for the most part. So, and you too, huh? All of us. Anyway, it's a great sport, and for the Darling Tennis Center, that's at Rampart and Summerlin Parkway.
Durango.
Durango, excuse me, Durango and Summerlin Parkway. So come on out and be part of this. And again, let's do the numbers, and how do they get involved?
Sure. Everybody, if you call our office at 792-8384, we'd be happy to get you registered, send you an email coupon to take to any of the participating facilities here in Las Vegas, or you can email us at free tennis@ustanevada.com. And we look forward to seeing everybody out on the courts.
Great program.
Thank you very much, congratulations. And we will take a seven-minute break, quarter of 10, we will be prompt, and we will start our next meeting. Congratulations.
Indiana, I'm never going to live that down. Yes, yes. Can we call everybody? Council, will you?
Thank you very much, congratulations. And we will take a seven-minute break, quarter of 10, we will be prompt, and we will start our next meeting. Congratulations.
Indiana, I'm never going to live that down. Yes, yes. Can we call everybody? Council, will you?
This is really exciting. And so just remember, everybody, take tennis lessons and get your children or grandchildren playing. It's a wonderful sport, keeps all of us out of trouble when we're young, did keep my children out of trouble for the most part. So, and you too, huh? All of us. Anyway, it's a great sport, and for the Darling Tennis Center, that's at Rampart and Summerlin Parkway. Durango, excuse me, Durango and Summerlin Parkway. So come on out and be part of this. And again, let's do the numbers, and how do they get involved?
Sure. Everybody, if you call our office at 792-8384, we'd be happy to get you registered, send you an email coupon to take to any of the participating facilities here in Las Vegas, or you can email us at free tennis@ustanevada.com. And we look forward to seeing everybody out on the courts.
Great program.
Thank you very much, congratulations. And we will take a seven-minute break, quarter of 10, we will be prompt, and we will start our next meeting. Congratulations.
Indiana, I'm never going to live that down. Yes, yes. Can we call everybody? Council, will you?
This is really exciting. And so just remember, everybody, take tennis lessons and get your children or grandchildren playing. It's a wonderful sport, keeps all of us out of trouble when we're young, did keep my children out of trouble for the most part. So, and you too, huh? All of us. Anyway, it's a great sport, and for the Darling Tennis Center, that's at Rampart and Summerlin Parkway. Durango, excuse me, Durango and Summerlin Parkway. So come on out and be part of this. And again, let's do the numbers, and how do they get involved?
Sure. Everybody, if you call our office at 792-8384, we'd be happy to get you registered, send you an email coupon to take to any of the participating facilities here in Las Vegas, or you can email us at free tennis@ustanevada.com. And we look forward to seeing everybody out on the courts.
Great program.
Thank you very much, congratulations. And we will take a seven-minute break, quarter of 10, we will be prompt, and we will start our next meeting. Congratulations.
Indiana, I'm never going to live that down. Yes, yes. Can we call everybody? Council, will you?
Thank you.[1258.12]
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, public comment. We're on to agenda item number nine. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium now and state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute. Okay, thank you. We will move on to item number 10. Business items for possible action. Any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items. Item number 29, Phantom Entertainment, DBA Crave Massive at 450 Fremont Street, Suite 370. Staff has asked that be stricken. Item number 62, Bill Number 201345 declares a moratorium on the application for construction and/or operation of medical marijuana establishments as contemplated by Senate Bill 374 of the 2013 legislative session. Staff has asked that be obeyed till September 18th, 2013. And then items 78, 79, 80, and 81, SUP 49549, SUP 49552, SUP 49553, and SDR 49548. Applicant Todd Kessler, owner, 1028 Fremont Street, Suite 100. The applicant has asked those items be obeyed till October 2nd, 2013, and that is my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Also, I would, that motion carries, I'd like to announce that yesterday in recommending, based on some information I was given to read, we had the incorrect date down on item number 62, 2013-45. That was the issue discussion on marijuana. I announced that that would be heard on the 18th of September, when in fact it was scheduled for today. So for those of you who are here in reference to that agenda item, it will be heard on the 18th and not today. Again, item 62, 2013-45, and that will be heard on the 18th. Okay. Did we post? We did, so good. And we'll move on to agenda item 11, possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of August 7th, 2013. A motion to approve those minutes, please.
So moved.
There's a motion, please vote. That motion carries, thank you. And now we'll move on to the consent agenda. And this is agenda item 12 through 49. And I understand, do you want to read those out? There've been some, some items that have been asked to be pulled.
Yeah, I have a note that says Councilman Coffin would like 18, 22, 23, and 24 pulled from the consent agenda.
Pardon, not 22? Excuse me, not 22? Thank you, not 22. So just 18, 23, and 24.
Yes.
So, agenda items 12 through 49, with the exception of those items, on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by their departments and may be acted in one motion. May I have a motion on those, please?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 12 through 49, except for 18, 23, and 24.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote. That motion carries, thank you very much. Let's move on to agenda item number 18. Councilman Coffin, would you like to address this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Somebody from Public Works must be here to speak on this. Jorge is coming up, Jorge Cervantes, to just give us an outline. This is not controversial at all. None of these items that were pulled for discussion are controversial. This one, I think the city is very proud of because it's been a long time since the fire station was constructed on the east side of Las Vegas. And this one is as far east as you can go. But it will really improve response times to our citizens and those, in sunrise manner of Clark County, those who may be in need of service. We trade services, as most people know. So please, Jorge, if you would tell us a little bit about this.
Certainly. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jorge Cervantes, Executive Director of Community Development. And if we can get the overhead here, I've got a rendering that'll show the fire station. This fire station is going to be at the southwest corner of Bonanza and Page. This is just east of Lam along Bonanza. It's a two-base station approximately 7,600 square feet in size. It'll house one rescue vehicle and one fire vehicle. The engine company will include a captain, an engineer, a paramedic, and a firefighter. And the rescue unit will include a paramedic and a firefighter. The construction is going to take approximately 10 months to construct. And if this item is approved today, we will issue a notice to proceed September 11th, start that construction. So it should be ready about this time next year for it to open up. Contractor is core construction. It's being done as a construction management at risk project so we can get it out quicker. And it will be a LEED-certified building. And so those are the information on the building, Councilman.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments from council?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, Councilman Barlow.
I just want to congratulate not only the councilman, but the entire residents in this specific area around Lam and Bonanza. For a long period of time, this area went underserved as it relates to fire services just as Fire Station 106 inside of West Las Vegas on Mount Moriah, on Stella Lake and Mount Moriah, went unserved for quite some time. And so I'm very elated and pleased at the fact that we are starting to fill the gaps as far as where the underserved residents in the City of Las Vegas exist when it comes to fire services because these just so happen to be some of the, if not the older areas of the community. And these folks have basically paid, you know, their fair share of taxes to have representation when it comes to fire safety. And so I'm very elated at the opportunity of voting on this item moving forward for the protection of our residents in the City of Las Vegas. And one question I do have, is this this identical footprint of Fire Station 106 that Fire Station 108 will be established?
It is, Councilman. This is the prototype that we developed a couple of years ago for a two-base fire station, so it's similar to 106 and 107.
Right. And Mayor, if you recall, when you first took office, I think one of your first ribbon cuttings, if not the first, was Fire Station 106 for the groundbreaking. And so we're looking forward to if Councilman Coffin would allow us to stand with him as he breaks ground here, too, because this is something very important for the community as a whole.
And you've got a gold certification.
And so will he. The gold certification for this.
What I said behind the counter up here was that 106 got gold LEED certification, which is certainly exciting. And we can't wait for 107, and then 110. So, Councilman Coffin, thank you, Mr. Cervantes.
We're very proud of this, Your Honor. And I hope that the entire council and mayor will be invited to the groundbreaking. And if they've already broken ground, we'll just sneak over there and pretend. In any event, it's a good thing for the citizens of the east side of the valley. And because, you know, residents of North Las Vegas and the county will also share in the benefit simply because we do watch out for each other. And in that case, it's really good for the whole valley. So thank you again, and I now move for approval of item 18.
Okay, there's a motion on item 18. Please vote. That motion carries. And now we'll move on to agenda item 23. Councilman Coffin.
Your Honor, thank you. I think Lisa Hibler is approaching us, so describe 23, Lisa, and then move into, after we move it, describe number 24. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Lisa Morris Hibler, Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services Department. City Council approval of agenda item 23 provides $603,404 in CDBG construction funds to allow the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority to make improvements to streets, sidewalks, on-street parking, common area landscape, and community center at the Roulan Earl Mobile Home Park located at 3901 East Stewart Avenue in Ward III. The total construction cost for this proposed project is $716,279, and the Housing Authority is going to close the $112,875 funding gap with the Roulan Earl Mobile Home Park Reserve operating funds. The city recently approved federal home funds to support the acquisition and installation of 51 manufactured housing units in the Roulan Earl Park. The current request is to address the poor conditions of the streets leading to this project, as well as develop and repair sidewalks to ensure ADA-compliant pedestrian access. And also in the audience is Mr. John Hill, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. Thank you.
Mr. Hill, could you stand up? Please, thank you. You've been with us before, but just wanted everybody to recognize you and thank you again. Thank you for coming. Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, thanks for recognizing Mr. Hill. I don't know if he wants to contribute anything, but he's here for questions, if any member of the council did have them. We've had a further discussion. In fact, he's put on our desks today his annual report and the report that he, the PowerPoint that he would have presented in July when he was here. So, you know, we'll have absorbed that. And then we're looking forward to meetings with him on the disposition of certain items of land under the control of the Regional Housing Authority in the future. So this is a big deal for the neighbors there. And because the city doesn't have enough money, you know, for streets and sidewalks primarily, we're in a bind, you know? And so when we can channel CDBG monies into that kind of thing, it benefits everyone. Thank you very much, Your Honor, for the privilege of making the motion to approve item number 23.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. And thank you, Dr. Hibler. You're on it all the time, never sleep. Great. And that motion carries. And Councilman, agenda item 24, please.
Okay. For the record, Lisa Morris Hibler, Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services Department. City Council approval of agenda item 24 provides $337,789 in CDBG construction funds to assist Nevada Hand in constructing a 3,000-square-foot onsite facility to house a Boys and Girls Club serving youth residing at Desert Pines Apartments located at 3750 East Bonanza Road in Ward III. The total construction cost for this project is $450,214. Nevada Hand will close the gap of $112,425 from sponsored cash. The city recently allocated funding to Nevada Hand to acquire and rehabilitate the 204-unit affordable housing development located on Bonanza Road. This development is one of few that provides up to four bedrooms for low-income, large families. The property is only 75% occupied at present time, yet there are already 300 youth residing at the property with a projection of 350 youth at full occupancy. Mr. Mike Mullins, President and CEO of Nevada Hand, is in the audience. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
And would you please stand as well, so we can thank you way in the back? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And Councilman Coffin.
Yeah, Mike is shy and doesn't want to be invited to anything. So just like church and school, he has found the back pew. I would like to say, I've toured Desert Pines, and I think others have, too. And I think that what Nevada Hand is doing there is remarkable. And they're putting youth first. They do provide for all ages. But on the other hand, when I toured with Mike, what I noticed was his real care, his concern about the fact that this is mostly dirt over there. And, you know, they're going to try to turf some of that area, not to be water wasters, but to be kid-friendly, and anybody who wants to sit on something soft for a change. So that will be nice for the appearance and the livability of the apartments. And of course, it goes along with the improvement of the general area there surrounding Desert Pines Golf Course, how things have changed there in recent years. And with this now, for the kids, that's a big deal because Boys and Girls Club, you know, they've invested in the east side of town. They took a risk and they refunded the facility that they've been running for years over there. Now to be affiliated with them again on the east side means something. The wonderful volunteers and philanthropists who are the Board of Directors of Boys and Girls Club also need to be congratulated for what they're about to do. So with that, Your Honor, unless any other members of the council have questions, I would move for approval of item 24.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. And that motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hibler. Since we're announcing people in the audience, I understand Assemblywoman Neal is here, so we'd like to welcome you. And Assemblyman Thompson, if you both stand up, it would be nice. And Assemblyman Thompson as well, thank you. We appreciate your being here. Great legislature. You really was, really did wonderful things this year. We're very proud of the legislative results, and thank you. And I also see in the audience, but not new, but new to the city actually, is our chief, our fire chief, Willie McDonald. Would you please stand up so everybody can say hi? Thank you. We're so delighted you're here and part of the team. What a great guy we have here. So, very exciting. All right, so at this point, then, we will move on to agenda item number 50. Okay, administrative, report on proposed repository for high-level nuclear waste at Yucca Mountain from Bob Halsted, Executive Director for the Nevada Agency for Nuclear Projects. And Phil Klaubark, Senior Management Analyst for Clark County's Nuclear Waste Division. This is in reference to all wards. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Your Honor, members of the council.
And if you'll be sure to state your names for the record. Thank you.
So I'm Robert J. Halsted. I'm Executive Director of the State of Nevada Agency for Nuclear Projects, which is part of the governor's office.
Good morning. My name is Phil Klaubark. I apologize for my nasal activity today. It's getting over the flu bug. And I'm a senior analyst with the Clark County Nuclear Waste Division.
Thank you. Please continue.
Okay, well, we're going to work with some slides this morning, but I promise you I'll move through them quickly. Let me begin on behalf of Governor Sandoval, thanking you, Mayor Goodman, and all of you members of the council for the strong and unwavering support that the City of Las Vegas has given to the state of Nevada in the long struggle against the Yucca Mountain Repository. It's very important to us, and obviously the support from Clark County as well. And in particular, I have to give special thanks for Councilwoman Tarkanian, who's not here, for her long service on the State Commission on Nuclear Projects. Let's see, if we go to slide two. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't know you had a advance here for me. I noticed you have a long agenda for the rest of the day, so I'll try to move quickly. I mostly want to give you an update on what's going to happen in the next 90 days or so. I actually have four parallel tracks to tell you about. This is how quickly things change from filing slides on Friday. I'm trying to simplify these things that are happening over the next 90 days. And these are three parallel things that are happening, and there's actually a fourth one in the U.S. Senate. First of all, there are 19 parties, including the state of Nevada and Clark County, in the licensing proceeding for Yucca Mountain before the Nuclear Regulatory Commission that was terminated. And there are various things that the parties are doing. Now, in our case, we have filed a motion with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission saying, if there's a restart, our three most important things that we want are to have the hearings held here in Las Vegas so that they're accessible to our parties here. We want to restart the computerized library so that not just the parties, but the public have access to all the information. And we actually thought we had a pretty good panel of administrative law judges. They spent two years learning the issues. So we certainly would like to see this business all be over. But if it's got to be restart, those are the things that Nevada has asked for, and Clark County has supported us on them. Needless to say, our erstwhile friends in Nye County have said, well, let's have those hearings in Washington, and we don't need to make the documents available. But they did agree on the panel of judges. Track two is what the Nuclear Regulatory Commission itself does. Remember, the court decision that came out on the 13th is actually directed at the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. They issued an order on Friday basically asking anyone who wants to give an opinion to give them an opinion by September 30th on how the proceeding should restart. Track three, we have this business with the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit. That's the, I think everyone agrees, the second most important federal court in the country behind the Supreme Court. That's the court that for 62 weeks, we were waiting for a decision that came on the 13th, which did order the NRC to restart. But it's very important to remember that the petitioners, State of Washington, South Carolina, Nuclear Energy Institute, and so forth, they didn't get all the things they asked for. They wanted a restart in 30 days. They wanted a decision in 14 months. They wanted the court to retain jurisdiction. And so it's a very modest win that the Yucca Mountain proponents have gotten. Nonetheless, they have forced the proceeding to restart. We're seriously looking at our options, which we can exercise through Friday, September 27th, to file a motion for rehearing on bump. That would be by all eight judges on the circuit, for the D.C. Circuit. And then track number four, the U.S. Senate is considering a pretty good piece of legislation, S1240, that would enact the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission. Remember, we talked about that last time in December. This is the effort to restructure the program, to get a volunteer site with safe geology, and take the program out of DOE. So those are the things that we expect to happen, and hopefully perhaps you'll invite Phil and I back in December. I think most of the action is going to occur in October and November now. I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble with this button. There it is, okay. Just to quickly review these issues, and we've spoken about them before, but I think we have to re-educate our public about them because frankly, we've been rather quiet for the last year waiting for the court. The thing that I want to emphasize most importantly is that if a nuclear waste repository was a safe and a profitable enterprise, someone would have taken it away from the state of Nevada a long time ago. It's a problem because the spent nuclear fuel, which is 90% of what would go in the repository, is extremely dangerous for the first 50 years, very dangerous for another 50 years after it comes out of a reactor. And then, of course, there are certain radionuclides that are dangerous for tens to hundreds of thousands of years. The site at Yucca Mountain is almost by any international standard, one that would not be under consideration. The groundwater is corrosive, will eat through the waste packages. Precipitation water, rainfall infiltrating through the fractured mountain threatens to carry those radionuclides into the underlying groundwater. The groundwater travel time is very fast for what a site would be considered here. We're talking under worst-case scenarios, failures occurring in a matter of hundreds of years, not just thousands. And then you throw in earthquakes, volcanoes, and erosion. It's, just was a bad site to begin with. And unfortunately, if you start with a bad site, there's very little opportunity to fix it through engineering. And in this case, we've got almost a Rube Goldberg kind of engineering concept. Remember, we talked about last time DOE's plan to put a five-ton titanium drip shield on top of every waste package. And that adds certainly five, maybe 10 to 15 billion dollars to the cost of the And that adds certainly $5, maybe $10 to $15 billion to the cost of the facility, something you wouldn't need at any other site in the world. And the transportation impacts, of course, are a big concern here in Las Vegas, where DOE's plans would use both the mainline railroad through downtown to get to Cali, anywhere up to 80% of the rail shipments could come through downtown. And they have 100% of their truck traffic going on the Beltway. And also with me today is Dr. Fred Dilger, our Transportation Consultant. He and I yesterday went up to Ward 6 to look at the place where the Department of Energy believes there's already an interchange constructed at Centennial, which would make it easy to move trucks carrying nuclear waste from the I-15 Beltway onto U.S. 95 North. Now, I realize there are a lot of good reasons why having an interchange there would be helpful to the citizens and helpful to commerce, but it's just interesting when you look at a Department of Energy environmental impact statement, and they're already planning on the safe transportation of nuclear waste through that interchange that hasn't been built yet. It's important also to remember, as you hear the discussions, well, we've got to do something with Yucca Mountain. What's there, even though $15 billion has been spent, really doesn't amount to anything useful. And it's not a good site for a storage facility or a reprocessing facility because of its poor transportation access, its limited water supply, and of course, the earthquake hazard is very serious for surface facilities. And now, we have some new evidence, even from the Department of Energy, and I won't summarize what's here, but the newer information is they would actually save $25 to $30 billion if the repository were built in a deep salt bed or a deep shale formation. So, one of the things that we want to talk about in the coming year is not only the safety case against Yucca Mountain, but the business case against Yucca Mountain. And with that, I think Phil's probably got some words to say, but you have my contact information. And again, I very much appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you. The city and Clark County are the state's most important allies in this fight, and we never forget it. Thank you.
Well, we thank you very much for the report and look forward to hearing you. I know at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which we hosted here in Las Vegas in June, there's a big push, it's coming back, and different states and representatives have stated very firmly that they want to reopen this discussion and move forward with it. So, and knowing what happened in Canada with that spill, regardless of the fact that it was some other material, that was, could have very easily been nuclear waste. So, thank you. Please.
No, Councilman.
Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm just wondering, are there other locations that are seriously being considered as a central repository for this stuff, or is the focus still on Yucca Mountain?
Right now, the law requires the focus be solely on Yucca Mountain. There actually are a number of communities that have expressed some interest in volunteering both for interim storage facilities and for geologic repositories. But that's why this new legislation in the U.S. Senate is important. I, I think until the program is taken out of the Department of Energy and restructured the way the Blue Ribbon Commission recommended it, I don't think anyone will come forward, even though there's kind of a gray area that the Secretary of Energy could solicit volunteer proposals, but couldn't really move to do anything without the law being changed. So for right now, we're in the gun sights.
Thank you. I'm pleased you would restate your name for us.
Yes, thank you. My name is Phil Klevork, and again, with Clark County. First of all, I'm going to start off, I'm not going to go over what Bob just went over, because there's so much more stuff that's going on outside it, so I'd like to use my time on some activities that I've worked with, with the City of Las Vegas, and particularly Randy Foltz's office and Sherri Van. Back in February, actually, part of that in our previous presentation, you may recall, that we discussed a EIS that had come out regarding the site-wide, the Nevada test site, Nevada National Security Site. I'll refer to it as a test site until probably I die, much like the rest of us. But in any event, we did get a final EIS came out in February, in which we were provided a 30-day comment period to review the comments, or the responses to the comments made, both to the city and also to Clark County, as well as others, which we found was inadequate. And I believe the city council themselves, yourselves, wrote a letter, and was basically ignored by the Department of Energy in response to that. So, they, after prodding them with cattle prods, we got basically a response that said that we were not going to give you an extension, and you just have to deal with it. So, you know, they're throwing the mud in our face without understanding what the limitations are to all of our resources. Nonetheless, we provided as thorough comments as we could, based on the 30-day comment period, and we worked with the city representatives. And our primary focus in those cases were along the transportation issues, constrained versus unconstrained, and cumulative impacts, which the Department of Energy fails to acknowledge in any of their EISs. And it's an egregious error and legal matter that needs to be brought up to NEPA, and I'm not sure how that will all process out. The Record of Decision, or ROD, was due out approximately 40 days or 45 days afterwards, which would have put it in April timeframe. We still have not received the ROD. And conversations I had with the Department of Energy Environmental Manager Group last week, they don't expect that decision now to come out till December timeframe. So, their rush of getting a 30-day comment period was only to literally toward all the commentaries and the public for making a thorough review of the document. So I just want to make sure that that was out there. I know that the city put an awful lot of effort into responding and reviewing the document. We worked together. I briefed the city on some of the contents, and I think we did as good of a job as we could. There's no question there. In party to that, there was also this discussion about U-233 through 35 fissile material that was going to come down randomly down our roads, random to us, because we had no idea which way it was going to come in or eventually end up at the test site. Since then, we've all heard about the media, the media got hold of this over probably about four or five months ago, and through Bob's office and the Governor's office. It somewhat has halted the process. The Department of Energy still has the right to be able to do this, but I think what we've made, the Department of Energy held them somewhat accountable, and made sure that we have the least confidence that the Department of Energy will transport this material safely, with secure transport, and, which is, which is way more than what we would have had before because of the classification of the waste. And the classification of the waste, the way the Department of Energy has got it described, is low-level waste. And fissile material, which is, as we probably have read, is bomb-making material in certain circumstances, and I don't think it should be classified to that, so therefore it shouldn't be transported as that kind of waste.
Question, if I might, Mr. Klevork. I understand that low-level waste is already being transported around this country. Is that fact, dear knowledge?
That is correct. That's correct. There, last year...
But not, nobody in the, in Washington will give any indication as to where it is, how it's being transported, so those of us who live and breathe in this country, low-level waste is already out there.
Right. And, you know, to be fair about the whole process, there's much of the low-level waste that really is of very minimal risk. I wouldn't get any heartburn on it. But what's classified as low-level waste is not all the same. We're not comparing apples to apples. You know, there's 25 different species or varieties of apples. We're not comparing apples. We're taking other things and bringing it in there. And because of this material being significantly different in itself alone, and radiological risks alone, it needs to be handled differently. And where, our concern is, is that if it's treated as low-level waste, that means it can go along Highway 160 over through, up and up to the Nevada test site without any secure transport. But because the Department of Energy wants to use off-secure transport, they could literally go any route that they want. And that raises a significant amount of concern with our emergency management group, and not to mention the citizens and visitors to the region. So, I've been working with the emergency management group, I've been working with the Public Works Group, there's only so much, and I've worked with the delegation, and with the Governor's Office. And that's what we can do. We can only raise it to a certain level and of interest, but the interest has gotten there. And then the reality is, we've done some positive stuff in order to make it more safe and secure for the people around us. Sorry.
Councilman Ross?
Thank you. Either one of you, if you can answer this. Several years ago, at the National League of Cities level, I successfully passed a resolution requiring the Department of Energy of the federal government to train and fund first responders along these transportation routes. Can either of you speak to that, or the progress or non-progress of that resolution? I mean, a resolution's a good idea on a piece of paper, is all it is, but any discussion about that?
Well, currently, I'm sorry, Bob. Currently, there is funding that comes out to the emergency management groups for, I believe, seven counties in the State of Nevada, and it's based on the amount of waste that's actually accepted and received at the Nevada test site and disposed of in Area 5, which is their low-level waste disposal cell. And it's 50 cents per cubic meter, and that's been a standard, no inflationary changes, no augmentation due to any other costs or risks and everything else. It's been a staple of 50 cents per cubic meter for a decade, or 12, 14 years. I've brought it up, the fact that maybe somebody ought to be addressing the fact that that needs to be raised up. Give you an example, last year, there was over approximately a million cubic feet received at Area 5. But during the Obama administration, where the, the RF funding, and RF funding came out, and it actually caused a lot of the DOE complex, like say Savannah River or Oak Ridge Laboratory, say, hey, we have an opportunity to take a whole bunch of federal money, let's get that stuff out to the Nevada test site faster instead of waiting 10 years. So, two years ago, three years ago, they received somewhere in the neighborhood of double, and two, probably two and a half times than what they would expect. So there was a significant increase in the amount of waste that was disposed of, which meant the money that would come from what you're, what you're getting through, Councilman, is about, about $1 million annually. This year it'll be around $700,000, $600,000 annually. That is disseminated amongst all of the counties. In the past, many years, and I can't speak for the last two years, but up in the previous two years, Clark County has waived that funding and basically allowed that extra money to go out to the more rural counties, because we hadn't needed it. And the needed, meaning for the training of our first responders. However, that paradigm has changed. The recession hurt, hit us, and we don't have the resources now and all that kind of stuff. So, I, and I'm, and I can't speak specifically to what happened last year, but I know that there was a lot of discussion saying that, hey, we're not going to allow you, we want our fair share of it.
Mayor, if I can continue.
Yes.
Can I say, on the federal funding, Councilman Ross, we're in our seventh or eighth year of discussing how that funding should be provided. That new legislation in the Senate would direct that kind of in the same way that you're talking, but that's a separate effort that would be the money collected in the federal waste fund to be provided to all the jurisdictions in all the different cities.
Well, through the mayor to Mr. Halsted, and by proxy both of you, it's imperative that if this gets shoved down our throat, that the federal government and the Department of Energy does something to train and prepare our first responders, our police, our fire departments, our highway patrol, any of those agencies who would be responding to any kind of incident. You mentioned the Department of Energy thinking that the Centennial Hills Spaghetti Bowl is already constructed and complete. That being said, are they willing to pay for it?
No, sir. But it does strike the problem that we have of often very poor, I would venture to say it's not unfair to say incompetent, technical and planning work on the part of the federal agencies, and it will require constant vigilance to get these needs addressed.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I just want to add on to that, if you don't mind. We all know that the bureaucratic decisions at a federal, on a federal level are not necessarily made locally, so they really do not understand the unique local conditions. So, in the EIS that I referred, referenced earlier, is that they, they would take their model, I believe it's called a Radtran model, but I could be wrong, but in any event, they took their modeling for transportation risk assessment on radiological exposure for residents. And they said, basically, I'm going to just, you know, take it out of context, but I'm going to just try to make it simple, that they said a citizen in the middle of Oklahoma that would be traveling on one of the interstates, I-40 or whatever goes in that neighborhood, would have the same amount of risk as a resident of Las Vegas. And based on a one shipment situation, that is absolutely true. But how many shipments will come by the resident in Oklahoma over a year, or over 10 years, versus the number of times a shipment will come by a resident who lives near the interstate or near a railroad, or whatever the case of it is, in Las Vegas or Clark County? And the actual answer is, is that we have the bottleneck. The bottleneck that all the transportation currently, the way it goes up to the Nevada test site, is 70, approximately 70 to 73% of all the shipments that go out to the Nevada test site come through Las Vegas Valley. Whereas in Oklahoma, maybe they only get 2 to 5%. I couldn't tell you. I'm just making up the number, but the reality is, it's not fair and equitable. So for the Department of Energy to say it is, is an egregious error.
Well, Mayor and Council, if I can, one more time, Mayor.
Yes, please.
That map you showed earlier of the transportation route corridor up to 215, you know, if we're accepting nuclear waste from Illinois, and it's headed to Nevada and through the Nevada test site, Mayor and Council, that shipment is coming directly through North Las Vegas into Ward 6 and Centennial Hills and up the U.S. 95 corridor to the Nevada test site. And that is a huge concern, because those shipments are going by hundreds of thousands of people, not just that one driver on that lonesome freeway in Oklahoma. And that's a huge concern, back to that resolution that the National League of Cities passed several years ago. Are those small communities trained and prepared for first, for response to a nuclear event?
Let me, let me correct, let me correct one thing now. At present time, we have an agreement. It's an unwritten, informal agreement, but it has been honored between Nevada governors back for 12 years and the Secretaries of Energy, that the shipments to NNSS, well, I want to call it the test site too, it's Area 5, that that low-level waste will not go through the spaghetti bowl, will not use the Beltway, and will not use the Hoover Dam bypass. That means it goes up 160, which is an imperfect route, but keeps it away from the highly populated areas. We just calculated with the 2010 census data, a very fine report that Dr. Dilger did for us, that one out of every nine residents of Clark County lives within half a mile of the routes that DOE wants to use for Yucca Mountain and that DOE proposes to use for shipments to Area 5. The computer model that Phil responded to, if you can understand, sometimes there's a common sense check on a lot of complex calculations. The DOE wants us to believe that it's safer to ship low-level waste through our current spaghetti bowl and up 95, or on the Beltway, than it is to use SR-160. And that's one of the challenges that we've raised to their environmental impact statement, and we're waiting for that Record of Decision. And frankly, I'm very strongly inclined to recommend legal action to not let them make that argument, even though they've now said, but will continue to honor that informal agreement if we allow that defective technical analysis to stand. It means any future directors at DOE, under budget pressure, may decide that they want to take the riskier path. And so it's a very serious, so it's not just a matter of the funding for emergency response. The first thing you do is you use routing to minimize the impacts on population, and of course, minimize the impacts on the heart of our tourism and gaming economy here, particularly if the spaghetti bowl were to be used. The shipments are coming within half a mile of major portions of the strip, as would the rails. So, we really have a serious issue here on transportation.
Well, and rail. Saying nothing of rail. Councilman Mayor Protem has, and then I have a question too, please.
So, so this stuff is being, potentially could be transported on a rail line, and it goes right through Symphony Park behind the Plaza.
Correct.
And there's an accident, and this material is exposed to the air. Has there been studies done on what exactly would happen to Las Vegas? How would it affect the environment, the water, the people? Can you tell us what would happen?
Yes, we've done detailed studies, both of severe accidents involving long-duration fires. That's the great concern. And unfortunately, I have to mention successful terrorist or sabotage attacks. Basically, even the Department of Energy is forced to acknowledge that the shipping casts are vulnerable to attacks using military weapons, and they acknowledge that the cleanup cost in a generic urban area could be $10 billion. We've done our own studies, looking at our own property values, our own atmospheric conditions that might, and they're, they're way off. It could easily be $100 billion, and a year and a half to do the cleanup work. It's very important that we deal with this issue by not allowing those shipments to go through these certain kinds of vulnerable areas. Similarly, with truck shipments, the impacts are a little less severe because of the smaller amount of waste that's carried. But again, you're talking about billions of dollars for cleanup, and... And unfortunately, these probabilities of these events occurring are not really as low as you might think. Depending on how you crunch these numbers, you're talking about numbers, you know, within the range of 1 in a million per annual of having these types of serious events occur. So, the point that Phil raised about the inadequacies of the Radtran computer model, which the Department of Energy has been hanging its hat on for 30 years to assure people of safety, we have serious concerns, we have 16 accepted challenges. If the licensing proceeding actually resumes, and Clark County has some related ones, and these are among the major issues that we will raise with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, asking them to deny the department a license because they have not dealt with these transportation and safety issues generally, and they've specifically not dealt with the potential impacts on Las Vegas and Clark County.
I know one of the biggest issues, I mean, obviously, that's been in front of us for quite some time. Does the state of Nevada have any control, or is it all DOE to access to Area 5? Is that something that we can just close on down and close Yucca Mountain because it's in our state and prevent any repositories there?
Well, we do not have formal yes and no regulatory authority over what happens at Area 5.
In our state, we have no...
In our state, we do have advisory, an advisory role on low-level waste, and we do have a regulatory role on the small portion, about 5% of that waste that's called mixed low-level waste, in which you have hazardous materials or recoverable resources. And that's the foot in the door that allows us to have an advisory role. And let me just say something about the whole issue with the uranium-233 since it's come up. You'll remember that on June 20th, Governor Sandoval wrote a very strong letter saying that the state objected to the shipments of those canisters and their disposal as low-level waste. There are a number of handles we do have, and I'd rather not talk about them at this time because they involve, at some point, litigation strategy. But right now, we're in a situation where the governor has had a phone call and a meeting with the Secretary of Energy, and there are discussions going on between the governor's office and the Department of Energy. And I am frankly quite hopeful, because this has been a concern to me for the 25 years I've worked for the state mostly on Yucca Mountain, that we would somehow have a more equal playing field on the decisions that are made about what happens at Area 5. It'd be inappropriate to say too much about it right now because these are negotiations ongoing. As I said, I hope you'll invite us back in December, and I think we'll have something to say then. But it's a matter of serious concern to the state, and we're pursuing it in the best way that we can, given the fact that we don't have clear regulatory authority over 95% of what goes to Area 5.
Which is amazing, since it's within the confines of our state that we don't have control over. I would ask our city manager to make sure in December that we do get a review and an update. Know that we have a committee, Councilman Coffin and Beer serve on the committee, and obviously, we're all concerned, everybody, and we've been concerned, and sort of were assured by our legislative group in Washington, don't worry about it till at least the term of this precedent's open, the doors closed. But knowing full well that low, whatever you call it, nuclear waste is out there and moving around this country, and as you say, not all apples are made the same. It's terribly concerning. So, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, you were told basically to try to keep it moving and keep it short, and I think that what we have not had today, and it needs to be said, is the historical perspective, because there are a lot of people in this valley now who have only been here 10 or 15 years. Let's say our population has doubled from 1 million to 2 million in the last 15 years. So, they haven't been around for the fights, they haven't been around for the exposure of the faulty studies that were done at the test site and the proven flaws in transportation assumptions, as well as the geological assumptions and the research done, and then the cover-up of the mistakes in the geological studies. All these things passed before many, many people who are in this audience or who are going to watch this program perhaps on their television stations. They don't realize why we oppose it sometimes because they think, having moved here from someplace else and having received the benefits of cheap nuclear power where they lived, they don't understand what the fuss is about. But I think a historical perspective is just critical to this, to remind them what's happened here. And it all started in 1951, when we were in a hot war in Korea. The Cold War was just beginning, really, at that time. And I moved here in 1951. The nuclear testing above ground started in 1951. So, all of these things are a nexus. It's my fault. In any event, we cheered it on. I remember climbing onto the roof of my house as a 9, 10, 11-year-old kid and watching the blasts. You couldn't see the blast itself because it was over the horizon, but you could see the flash, a sickening yellow-white cloud moving, a flash moving in front of your face like a windshield wiper and then receding more slowly as the cloud itself began to cool and then drift off. We were promised that we would never be exposed to nuclear radiation by the government. We were patriotic, and we believed our government. And yet, many times, those clouds came over southern Nevada. They went over Los Angeles, and they've killed thousands of people in Utah and have killed people in northern Nevada and eastern Nevada, increased cancer. I'm not even talking about the people who worked there, but the people who were patriots, who really believed the national government was telling the truth. So, we fight these things from a historical perspective, as well as a common sense business perspective, as you've pointed out, and the practical aspect of the site being unsuitable, at least we think it is, and the transportation being unsuitable. Now, we swallowed all that, hook, line, and sinker, and we had 10 years of above-ground explosions until we went to underground. And we have seen that even underground explosions can vent. I was a witness to the 1971 vetting, I think it was, of the Bainberry Blast, flying in an airplane right beside the test site on the way up to Reno for a meeting, and there was this pink flume that looked like a dust devil. And it was so odd, when we landed in Reno, we found out that one of the supposedly safe underground nuclear blasts had blown right through the shaft and created more nuclear pollution. So, that's 20 years after it started, despite all the assurances of safety. Now, granted, some of the half-lives of some of these nucleiides is not very long. In other words, I've been on the test site before. You can walk around a lot of places there, and some of the stuff is now decayed to the point where it's pretty safe. But so much of it, particularly from nuclear power generation, is extremely hot and will always be hot. So, newcomers to Las Vegas, and I count you within the last 20 years, if you haven't been part of this fight, and I was baptized in 1983 to this fight because I was a freshman legislator then, and that's when the fight really began. And Senator Reed and our congressional delegation, Harry was in the House then, but he came into the Senate in 86. Harry Reed is the sole reason why the government is backing away and being very tender about this to us and paying respect, because they know they can outlast Harry Reed. The thing is, is that the profitable nuclear power generators in this country, the for-profit companies, have been paying billions into the fund, and they don't have what they paid for. And they have a gripe, they have a legitimate gripe. But their solution is to push it all in in Nevada. So, in 1987, the Screw Nevada bill was passed, completely wiping out all of the previous positions which theoretically were scientific and supposedly rational and fair. So, to wrap up my long talk here, I just want to say that people who live here need to understand the history and what we've given. And there was a big difference between wartime pollution of our landscape, and a lot of it is polluted with nuclear, nucleiides, but also that they're not dead yet. There's plutonium on the surface of the test site, and it moves. You know, plutonium's very heavy, but the triggers of these blasts, and there's other things in plutonium, they move slowly. When the wind blows, they move a little bit at a time. It probably won't be my lifetime that it's off the reservation, but some of it is going to move. And that catastrophe, we have not quite figured out how to stop yet. Despite hundreds of monitoring wells of the water around the test site and other stations to detect radioactivity, we nevertheless, past my lifetime, are going to see it move off the reservation. So, then what do we do with the stuff that was put there 60 years ago and 50 years ago and 40 years ago? So, this is another topic. But it all boils down to a lack of faith in anything we're told by the people who have run this as their heritage in the federal government. They begin to own the problem, and they begin to own into, buy into the philosophy that we can put it in Nevada because hardly anybody lives there, and we've got all that empty space that we own, 90% of the state or 85% depending on who's counting. So, I think that, and I've mentioned Harry Reed because he's majority leader and he has power right now, but what happens AR after Reed? When will that be, when Harry decides not to serve in the Senate any longer? Or he gets knocked out by people who, on a short-term basis, think it's a good thing, but in a long-term basis, find out that's bad for Nevada? In the absence of Harry Reed or a majority leader of the Senate or somebody with 20 or 30 years of seniority in the Senate or the House in a key position, we are in serious trouble, truly, no matter what a governor says, no matter how many legislators and county commissioners and city council members protest. So, I told the lobbyists years ago, because they knew I was thinking about this for a long time, and 30 years of thinking, 60 years of living with it, I thought that, you know, maybe Nevada people would be more receptive if they were treated fairly instead of the provisions under the Screw Nevada bill, which is almost 30 years old. Why not have half a dozen repositories in this country? Why make Nevada take it all? Why not have two in the east, two in the Midwest, two in the west, and maybe Nevada could be one of those? Because then, you wouldn't have the transportation problem moving so much, so many tons of this stuff over the Mississippi, over the mountain ranges, over the difficult places where railroad trains and highways traverse a very dangerous place. Could totally ruin any state along the way. And Nevada would probably have less of an objection if the rest of the country shared the burden. We didn't get nuclear power in our homes until, oh, recently, really. When this fight started, we weren't getting any nuclear power. It was all Nevada-generated and from fossil fuels. And then it merged with Sierra Pacific, and now we're part of a larger intertie, and we're going national now. So, we're going to be getting nuclear power, but probably are getting it now. I just don't know the percentage. The point is, we're starting to share in the benefits of the cheaper nuclear power, but we shouldn't have to pay the price for our heritage and our children and their descendants of this thing. So, it's terribly unfair, and I feel like we have a problem here. We can't just keep saying no. We better think about how we can get the other states to share in this burden before we get rolled, because that's a term here we use in Nevada. You know, when you've been rolled, it's all over. And I question, sometimes I question my own thinking on this because of so many years. Am I a compromiser? I used to worry that people wanted it for money. Money shouldn't play a role in it. Jobs should not play a role in it. Yes, there's construction jobs for a while, and then there's the long-term maintenance jobs, but it isn't enough to sacrifice your principles on this and the heritage and the health of the descendants of our children. So, I feel like, I know Councilman Beer's and I worked together on this, and we're going to pay more attention to it since we've been, they've started to move again in Washington. These billion-dollar corporations are not going to stop. They're just waiting for Harry to leave the Senate.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor, Your Honor.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Klobork, Mr. Halsted. We hope you'll be back in December. Thank you for your reports, very informative, and we will continue to fight on.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank you guys for inviting us, and we look forward to coming back in December. I know that the Public Works Group with the I-11 corridor process, it's another wrench that gets thrown into the pile, so, thank you.
Without question. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Councilman Kaufman. That was an accurate rendering of a sad story. But I don't want us to leave by thinking that we're defeated, and we do have important cards to play, and the new legislation in the U.S. Senate is a good way to go forward, and I hope we'll have some things to tell you about that in December. The markup is in October.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
We'll just build the wall.
I'm not a defeatist on the issue, Bob. It's just that I know the power of money and time and the, unfortunately, very short memory of human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 51, Report on External Social Media Policies for the Office of Communications, and that would be Mr. Riggelman.
Good morning, Mayor. City council members. For the record, David Riggelman, Communications Director. As you read, Mayor, I'm here to give you a brief report on a new social media policy that we've adopted here at the City of Las Vegas. That policy is in your backup materials, and hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. I think you're well aware of the fact that we've really ramped up our efforts to communicate using social media. Back in May, we formed a social media team, and we've put more resource into being able to communicate via social media. The reasons behind that are obvious, I think, to all of us. Surveys say that over half the adults in the United States now use some form of social media to communicate. Probably even more significant is that 95%, 95% of the people between 18 and 24 years old in the United States use social media to communicate on a regular basis. And sites like Facebook have well over a billion followers worldwide. So, obviously, if we want to communicate in a way that's meaningful to the public we serve, we need to be participating in social media. To me, it's going the way of the telephone back in Alexander Graham Bell's day, websites of 20 years ago. Those are commonplace today. We take them for granted. Social media is that exact same thing. The policy before you, we believe, will help us communicate via social media in an effective way. The policy that you have before you is our external policy. This really speaks to how we'll put messages out to the public and to the world around us. We're working on an internal policy that will speak to how employees can use social media while on the job. We're putting the finishing touches on that. But this policy really speaks to the dissemination of information out to the world via social media. I think you'll notice that it's very similar to our current policies, very similar to the policies we have for KCLV and similar to the policies we already have for public information. One of the things you'll notice in there, it's also very consistent with state law, which says that we can't use public dollars to support private things, political candidates, ballot initiatives. We're precluded from doing that, and so, the policy is consistent with that. As it relates to the council, it'll be no surprise here, at the time that you decide to run for office, if you decide to run for reelection, once you file, it'll be just like Channel 2 or your electronic newsletters. We won't post your picture, quotes from you, statements from you, your name. Those will, we'll still report on things that go on within the ward or within the city, but we won't feature you. And that's nothing new. We've had that policy in place since Channel 2 launched, really even before the state law was passed back in 2000. So, this is very consistent with all of that, and we believe that it'll keep us in line also with the public purpose doctrine, and it'll make sure that in our communications with the public, we're doing it in the most effective way to benefit the people we serve. I'd like to give you just a couple of real quick updates on social media I think you'll find interesting. Our social media team, led by Heather Curry, Jennifer Davies, and also Susie Martinez, are really doing a phenomenal job. We passed 10,000 followers on Facebook, I'm sorry, on Twitter this past weekend. That's a huge jump, and it's really a credit to the team because I think the reason so many people are now following us, and it's more and more every week, is because the site is so good. There's such great information. Councilman Ross, during the floods, we had so much information in real time about what was happening in the Northwest, what roads were closed, what intersections to avoid, that people retweet that information, and then it gets retweeted and retweeted to the people who follow them, and people realize, well, that's good information. I'm going to start following the city because they're getting information out that's important to me. It's information that I can use. So, I'm very proud of the fact that we've been able to make such change, and it's really a credit to the team. A couple other little interesting statistics I think you'll find interesting. On Twitter, among the top U.S. cities, this is just on the number of followers, we rank 18th at 10,000 followers. On Facebook, we rank 13th. Now, this is just in the straight number of followers, and to give you some perspective on that, City of New York, for example, on Twitter, they have 107,000 followers, but it's a city of 8.2 million people. it's a city of 8.2 million people. Los Angeles has 55,000 followers. Again, we have 10,000, but it's a city of 3.8 million people. So if you look at it per capita, we actually have more people following us in our community than they do in those. So I think the fact that we rank 18th and 13th, you have to keep in consideration of the fact that the cities that we're being compared with are much larger than we are and would have more of an incentive for people within those communities to follow them than, than another community. Something I think you'll find interesting, City of Phoenix, 1.4 million people, only has about 2,000 followers on Twitter compared to our 10,000. So again, it's a credit to the team and the effort that they're putting into getting the word out. A couple of other things, just very quickly. We launched a new site this past weekend called Tumblr. It's spelled T-U-M-B-L-R. Tumblr is a microblog site similar to Twitter, but it's much more flexible. For example, you're not limited to the 140 characters. You can have a message as long as you want, you can post videos and graphics, and it's really a cool, flexible site. We're using it to get information out about Emergency Preparedness Month, which is in September going on right now. So it's a great new site. People can check us out at citelasvegas.tumblr.com. Of course, it's free, excuse me, to sign up for Tumblr to include that app on your, on your smartphone. That's a great site. Next week, the city's going to be launching another new site, Instagram. I know many of you are familiar with it. It's a very popular site, easy to share photos, videos. It's really a site that's just made to work for the city. We talk about events beforehand by showing photos of where the event's going to take place or videos of the event from the year before. We have great flexibility on that as well. So we're looking forward to getting the word out. I think we've talked about doing a Throwback Tuesday, is that right? Where we'll show, Throwback Thursday, sorry, where we'll show historic pictures of the city. Councilman Kaufman, I know you'll like this. We can use some old historic photos of Las Vegas and put those up on the site to draw people in on Thursdays, maybe check out, maybe what I look like without gray hair back in the day or something like that. And then the last thing that I'd like to touch on is that we're going to be creating a site on Facebook for the council, for the city council. You'll each have a tab, each ward, so the advantage here is that when you do file for office and we can't use your photo, your name, et cetera, we'll still be able to report about things going on within the ward. If there's a construction project or an event that's going on, we can still let the public know that it's going on. It'll be a nice repository of information all in one place for the council on, on Facebook. So I think that'll be used a lot. Again, Facebook is, is probably the preeminent social media site in the United States and in the world right now, so we want to make sure that we have good presence there as well. So Mayor, that really concludes my, my remarks. Again, I just thank my team of Heather and Jennifer and Susie, led by Diana Paul, also is the manager over that group. They're doing a terrific job, as based by the numbers that we're seeing, so.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Riggelman, and it certainly is, we're moving right along, staying up with it. In fact, in front of the, the roll of the ocean, so this is great news for us all and I know we're getting better educated all the time. And I see Councilman Barlow would like to have a word.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, David, for being so abrasive and ahead of the curve on this, because I just continue to reflect back on when all this was first coming about and the pushback that I continued to receive when I was talking about Facebook and Twitter and everyone was like, oh, no, you can't do that. And now to have the city's-
We love it now.
To have the city's arms wide open like this and embracing it and saying, bring it on, and having the policies and procedures in place to basically protect the city at the same time. Because I know when change occurs, it's kind of difficult to, to embrace it because we've been doing the same thing for such a long time to where everything was, you know, going along to get along. But, you know, having the opportunity to be at the cutting edge of technology and being able to really reach the demographics of, of our community was very important to me. And so I'm like just sitting here rocking in my chair, just smiling, going, finally, you know? And, and I'm really excited at the opportunity of the city really taking advantage of the opportunities that, through social media, that will avail the city to communicate and to share information in real time and being able to really communicate with the community through both ends. The, the community will have an opportunity, as they do now, to communicate with the council during our live televised, you know, council meeting.
Sure.
You know, being able to communicate and basically share their thoughts and ideas and recommendations and suggestions as to how, in fact, they feel we should hear their voices and, and vote according to, you know, those items that come before us. And so I believe that's what the opportunity of open government provides us and also what it does at, at the bare bones. It provides an additional layer of transparency for what we're doing each and every day, improving the quality of life for, for our residents. So I wanted to basically tip my hat to, to Heather and Jen and Susie as well as Diana as far as the team, the social media team that has, that you put in place to oversee the communication, the new wave of communication here at the City of Las Vegas. Thank you to you and your entire team.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Riggelman. And we will now move on to Agenda Item 52, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding an Educational Affiliation Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas and Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of the University of Nevada, Las Vegas UNLV, which provides a system of public resource allocation and education by the UNLV School of Social Work, working with the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue EMS providers to connect citizens with social services for which they are eligible. This is in reference to all wards. Morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of the council. I'm Willie McDonald, the city's fire chief. Really proud to say that. I'd like to share some information about you with a, about a very innovative program that we're hoping to enter into. The very dedicated and very hardworking men and women of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue right now are on pace to respond to about 100,000 emergencies this year, emergency requests during this calendar year. What happens in some of those cases and sometimes even on a daily basis is we respond to someone who, they're not acutely ill or injured, but they were very much in need of support or longer-term services that we don't normally provide through our 911 system. So what happens is that we respond on that person. We put them in our ambulances, we take them off to the ER. There's likely not going to be the right services at the ER to help support those folks' needs, so they return home or wherever we picked them up from, and then the cycle just starts over again. Dr. Slattery and I have been attending meetings this last month at the University Medical Center, and this problem has been something that has been talked about through community stakeholders for some time. One of the statistics they shared with us this, this last meeting was that they've identified 360 people that have met or visited their emergency room four times or more a week for the last year, 350. So that's one hospital, and that just indicates the need that we really have out there to be able to provide our folks with services not normally provided by the fire department, but they certainly need. So through the development of a very creative program with the University of Nevada, Las Vegas School of Social Work, we will be in a position to be able to provide our firefighters with services or a tool that they don't currently have that will allow for us to provide enhanced services to a segment of our community residents and citizens that need support but not necessarily emergency room support. And so we'll be able to adjust their needs more fully. The program's innovative, it's very needed by our folks, and it's the great idea of Sarah McCray, who's worked directly with UNLV in developing this partnership. Sarah's with me, she has been with the department with Las Vegas Fire and Rescue for almost 15 years. She's a firefighter, she's been a paramedic, a member of our heavy rescue team, she's an engineer for several years, and she's now our medical services quality improvement coordinator. She's joined here today by Margarita Jelenek, who is the Director of Field Education at the School of Social Work at UNLV. And I just want to tell you, as an old paramedic for 10 years, I wish we'd have had this program way back when. I'm very excited about it, so happy to introduce Sarah to explain it to you.
Thank you and welcome, and if you'd say your name for the record, please.
For the record, my name is Sarah McCray. I'm Emergency Medical Services Quality Improvement Coordinator for the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. Thank you for that introduction. I think you explained the program very well. If you have any questions, I did pass out some paperwork up there that kind of gives you some bulleted items as to the things that we hope to accomplish. Having been a paramedic for the fire department for over 10 years, I did recognize that a large portion of our population, the people that we serve, that were, their needs were not met by the emergency medical services that we provided. And I think this is just an extension of the kind of services that the fire department and the city would like to provide for our, our community and making sure that these, these loopholes are closed, these communication, communication gaps are closed, and with the cooperative arrangement with UNLV, also providing excellent education experience to those students and just really reaching out to the community to try to, to close those loopholes. Do you have any questions?
Are you availing yourselves of all the social services in town with immediate connection and through UNLV or directly through the fire department?
What we've done is we have two students that are in their master's degree program at UNLV, and they'll be working with me, I'll be acting as their field preceptor. The, our providers will recognize these people in the community and make referrals to our students, and our students will, will then go out and meet these citizens and try to close those gaps and act almost as like social service brokers and identify which social services would be best fit for their needs.
And then would you also be checking with ER and the various hospitals to see if there's a reduction in these repeat numbers that go in week after week after work, week for less severe problems?
Absolutely, yes. We will identify certain ways to kind of track the trends and to see how effective this program has been. Another aspect of this program will be that as our providers make those referrals, they'll also indicate which hospital they're being transported to, and then we'll also be able to reach out to the hospital receiving providers and, and make those referrals through the hospital as well.
So will that include the private hospitals as well as the public hospital?
Yes, most hospitals have social workers working within their, within their emergency departments where they can kind of do a lot of the services that our students will be able to fulfill.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, this wonderful program. We look forward to seeing it roll out here and do all the good that it looks like it's going to do. Thank you, Chief.
I would like to, I would like to recognize our, our representative from UNLV if you don't mind.
Please.
Would you please rise? I'm sorry.
I know sometimes I have to work very hard and just go through what it does. In this wonderful instance, I don't have a thing to say except how lovely we are to have the fire in safety. Let's know what we do.
Thank you. Thank you. Was that Margarita?
Yes.
And your last name, please?
Jelen.
Jelen?
Jelenek.
Jelenek.
Could you spell it, please?
No.
Do you have it written?
No.
J-E-L-L-I-N-E-K.
Yeah.
Thank heavens for your last two letters. I'm so sick of that ad on the news about my feet are Jelen or whatever that is. I'm glad it's EK. Thank you. Thank you for this. This is wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Yay. Nice. Okay, and on this, acceptance of this report, is there a motion, please?
I will move for approval.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote and please post. And that motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 53, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding an Interlocal Agreement for Shared Funding Between the Cities of Las Vegas North, Las Vegas Henderson, Boulder City and Clark County Related to Regional Homeless Coordination and Inclement Weather Shelter in the City of Las Vegas's Contribution of $274,953.90. This is general fund, funding, and it's reference all wards. And Dr. Hibler, Mr. Harson, Dr. Hibler.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Can we cue the presentation? Okay, thank you. Lisa Morris Hibler, Deputy Director, Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services Department. This is an annual report on the Southern Nevada Regional Homeless Coalition Committee on Homelessness, which is related to the interlocal agreement for regional homeless coordination and inclement weather shelter. I'm sorry, Van has given us some props for later. Thank you, Jace, I appreciate it. It's for later in the presentation.
Fine porcelain china, looks like, way up here.
Since January 2007, our region coordinates a biannual HUD mandated homeless census, which focuses on counting the number of homeless, both sheltered and unsheltered in Southern Nevada. The census report identifies key issues and demographics which assist with homeless planning and coordination efforts. The 2013 Southern Nevada Homeless Census estimated over 33,000 people experience homelessness in Southern Nevada annually. We continue to make strides in addressing homelessness in large part due to the coordinated efforts, even with reduced resources and the constant influx of homeless from other In 2004, the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition established the Committee on Homelessness, referred to as COH, to address issues from a regional perspective. The COH is comprised of financially contributing members, including Clark County and the cities of Las Vegas, Henderson, North Las Vegas and Boulder City, and additional regional partners, which include Clark County School District, State of Nevada Adult Mental Health, Metropolitan Police Department, and homeless service nonprofit providers. We will be expanding the board to include the Housing Authority, faith-based organizations, and other key stakeholders. The COH identified three goals for fiscal year 2013 as stated. The federal government requires communities to have a plan in order to be considered for grant funding, and with new regulations under the HART Act, the Committee on Homelessness is receiving technical assistance from HUD to align our plan with the new regulations. The COH continues to update the plan to identify gaps and track progress, and through the regional plan to end homelessness, the COH is making progress towards ending veterans and chronic homelessness by 2015 and ending children, families, and youth homelessness by 2020. The solution to this issue requires more than just the government, and as such, the Community Engagement Plan includes developing an awareness campaign that educates the public on how they can contribute to ending homelessness in our community. As we've discussed before, homelessness has many faces, and those who experience homelessness have a variety of factors that contribute to their situation. The changing dynamics create a variety of subpopulation sectors and continue to challenge Southern Nevada. Some of the challenges we continue to face in addressing homelessness in our area includes the service-resistant population, which is our hardest-to-serve population, a lack of sufficient mental health and drug treatment resources, the unintended consequences of homeless feedings that occur in our streets and our parks, transitioning now from a biannual homeless count that's conducted every other year to an annual homeless count. This change is being made based on the new HART Act, regulations, and failure to conduct an annual count will result in loss of federal funding. We also have funding challenges. The declining and eliminated federal funding has also been a persistent challenge. This year, we may potentially experience a 50% cut in the homeless grant funds due to the federal sequestration and other factors. Although we have many challenges, we continue to move forward and make progress. Here are a few of our community collaborations developed to provide services to those most in need. The connect events, which you see listed, are one-day events held throughout the year to provide a one-stop support of services. We also have outreach efforts that are provided on an ongoing basis to connect the homeless to services. The 100,000 Homes Campaign, which is a national initiative, seeks to permanently house the most chronic of homelessness, homeless during a specific time period. Our area's Rapid Results Team housed over 100 chronic homeless individuals within 100 days, and we met our goal set by our team. We have a new partnership with the Housing Authority, which is helping to place homeless who are currently residing in emergency or transitional housing into permanent housing. And also with the development of our cooling and warming stations, many of our faith, community and government partnerships are working together to provide respite during the hottest and coldest days of our year. The City of Las Vegas continues to provide limited direct client services through the Corridor of Hope Center. In fiscal year 2013, we assisted 276 homeless people through our Reconnecting Family to Home program. We also provide the initial reassessment for client services as people walk through the door of the Corridor of Hope, and on average, we have 200 people per month that come to our location to seek services and they're referred to our nonprofit partners. We are also extremely excited about the donation stations program. We learned about this about in 2010 when we, a couple of our staff people went to Denver at the time, Tyrone Thompson was a member of the city, and we were excited to bring this program back. We launched it with just 12 of the meters, and at that time, they were painted a bright, fluorescent green color, but we have since been able to wrap the meters, and so we are promoting the program. The goal of the City of Las Vegas Donation Station to End Homelessness Meter Program is to increase public awareness about the complex issue of homelessness and offer a convenient way for citizens to contribute. There are one of our lovely meters there, and there are also two other ones in the slideshow. This is a unique opportunity to change- change lives. Businesses, corporations, community organizations, families, and private citizens can all participate by sponsoring the newly designed and wrapped donation station meters. The annual meter sponsorship is $1,000 and it's tax deductible investment. And it includes having a recycled parking meter, a customized wrap with sponsorship logo, installation, coin collection, maintenance, and so on and so forth. All of the sponsorship funds and meter collections go directly to assisting the homeless with services such as transportation to reconnect individuals with family, meals, and basic life essentials. I will also make sure that each of you have the new brochure that we have and I'll make sure that our public information office has that as well.
Mayor, can I stop her there?
You want to give a birthday gift to your wife? Buy one.
Well, that's right. Doctor, if I may, through you, Mayor. Doctor, you just went through that so quickly and I want you to really get the message out there. Someone donates $1,000.
Yes.
Tell them what, tell the public what they get for $1,000. Slowly.
Well, okay, thank you, Councilman Ross. First of all, for the $1,000, what you're really doing is you're helping our community because we are providing assistance with reconnecting families, meals, and basic life essentials. As I said, we, each year, we transport about 300 people. We connect them with their families and many of those individuals, they take the bus, they go different places, they have no shoes, they have no food, and that is essential services that we provide. So for the $1,000, which is tax deductible, if it's a business organization, et cetera, it will be custom wrapped, as you see here on the stand and also on the screen. So it lists the business so that they can, people will know that they are supporting that. And then also, all the change that's collected through our parking enforcement goes right into our program. So it's a great way for businesses and organizations to sponsor.
Okay, so Mayor, if I may again, through you to Dr. Hibler. So any business in wards one through six who wants their own meter, because the wrap is going to have their business name on it, correct?
Yes.
Or say it's a family. The Ross family wants to donate $1,000. They get their own wrap, not only to advertise their business, but also show their community engagement as a community partner in the City of Las Vegas. All the proceeds go to the homeless and it's tax deductible, which is probably a big thing, a big issue. And I just wanted the doctor to really pound that home.
Yes.
Because I know there's lots of businesses in the City of Las Vegas in all of our wards that would be willing to come up with $1,000 tax deductible dollars and donate to this wonderful program and have their own wrap wrapped around one of these meters.
Yes, and I'd just like to point out that Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity is affiliated with Councilman Barlow. This has been really popular with fraternities and sororities. We've had several of them sponsor and it's really just an easy way for people to contribute and to make a real difference because it seems like it's small, but it makes a big difference to the people that are recipients of it.
Yes, please, go ahead. I'm trying to see if it says anything except the small print on the wrap.
Yes, it does.
You know, this is, you know.
At the top, it says the donation station and then right on the front, I can't leave the mic. I apologize. It also explains what the money goes to and it talks about the food, transportation, shelter, et cetera, on the, right on the.
And where are these stationed besides in front of my own business or home or wherever? Are they in front of banks? Are they in front of supermarkets? Where have you placed them all over? The city only or into the county as well?
Right now, it's all within the city boundaries. We have to work things out with parking enforcement. But most of these are downtown in our, so Fremont East, we have one right by Triple George. I think we have one that's coming to City Hall. We had one in our old City Hall on the Plaza level. So right now, that they are mostly downtown. But we have had some requests from other companies that are asking, can they have it just on the, with just the stand at their own businesses? And we're trying to work that out, so.
Mayor, I'd like to request, I'd like to request two of them at Centennial Hills Community Center because I think this will be so popular there. They're going to fill up fast, so you almost need two of them. So I think that'd be a great location. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. And at some point, hopefully on our social media, we will have a map showing where all of these are so you can contribute and do your part. And they do make wonderful birthday gifts or anniversary gifts or graduation gifts. And so there's lots that everybody, a group of people can get together, four people or four businesses and have one meter. Yes?
I'm thinking, you mentioned the social media component and also Dr. Hibler bringing this forward. I think we're possibly onto something here specifically, for example, in business centers where, for example, the middle of the lobby, just throwing this out as an example, of the DSC, where there's hundreds of people on a daily basis come through that, you know, contribute, you know, or possibly getting some of the grocery stores involved and placing one near their door or inside where there's high volume traffic where individuals have an opportunity to come by and drop change. But also, it promotes a good, a public good at the same time as far as giving back. And so I'm pretty sure Dr. Hibler's already thought about that, but maybe there's an opportunity through our social media portals to really start to celebrate that and advertise the opportunity of what's available. It's twofold. The City of Las Vegas, of course, promotes this 4,000, but the residual will be the change over a long period of time. And the more opportunities and places we have to place the donation stations throughout the community to include inside of businesses where there's high volume of traffic, I believe we'll really have an opportunity to expand our opportunity to receive more dollars to, for the homeless, for the homeless program that we're moving forward. I do have a question in regards to homeless, being that, and I know this is somewhat off subject as far as James Gay. The City of Las Vegas and Clark County and other municipalities for many years have donated, well, not donated, but we've contributed to the homeless problem that we've had for such a long time in Las Vegas, millions of dollars annually and probably more than, you know, multiple millions of dollars over the period of time that we've been addressing this homeless issue. I yet to see or feel the impact as far as the homeless situation, being that we have so many tents and tent cities and little shanty towns that are popping up in the inner city and in particular, my ward. Help me understand what the issues, you know, folks such as the county and the City of Las Vegas and Metro, what are the issues that we're facing as far as why these folks choose to remain in tents and laying out on the sidewalks and in drain channels, flood drain channels and out in the desert? Why aren't they taking advantage of the structured environments that we have, whether it be Salvation Army, Catholic Charities, Las Vegas Rescue Mission? Why aren't they taking advantage of going inside? Why are they choosing to remain outside, if you know?
Okay. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Councilman Barlow, thank you for those comments. The individuals that you're referring to are what we call service-resistant and as I stated, those are our most difficult individuals to connect to services. They are, they have a myriad of issues, so I'm not going to try to label any one person, but it could be mental illness, it could be drug addiction. And it just takes a lot of resources. And by that, I mean, we have to go out and make contact over and over and over again to hopefully bring those people in. In the honor of today, I have Tyrone Thompson with the Regional Homeless Initiative Office and also Jody Gerson with Southern Nevada Adult Mental Health to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Let me stop you there and I'm glad that you mentioned that they are there. Assemblymen and, and what was the young lady's name?
Jody Gerson. She's the director of Southern Nevada Adult Mental Health.
Yeah, if the two of them can come forward and turn these mics on real quick because I, I mean, because this is what I'm facing with on a daily basis in my ward. And I just wanted to hear from you all, and you can take the middle one if you don't mind. That way everyone has their own personal microphone.
(inaudible).
It'll come on. Yeah, there you go. And because I'm trying to figure out how, if in fact, we can solve this. Is this solvable? And I know that the municipalities, as you all know, Clark County, City of Las Vegas, Henderson, North Las Vegas, we're all a part of funding to address this regional homeless issue. I mean, are, is it getting worse? Are we making a dent? I mean, are we throwing good money at a bad situation and don't see the results? Where are the checks and balances here? From Tyrone, your perspective and also from the mental health perspective, because I understand that there's a conglomerate of people who are out on the streets that are mentally ill. How do we address this? Because I think that it's, it's a travesty that we have in this great city that we live in. We have so many people out on the street that are just really bumping their head each and every day and they're impacting the flow of business, they're impacting the residential communities. And it's really not a good look for the type of city that this mayor and council would really enjoy having and celebrating. And whenever we, you know, leave City Hall and drive down some of our major corridors, it's really unfortunate to see how many hundreds of people that are laying out on the sidewalk, which, you know, asked the question, where I asked the question, you know, why aren't they inside of these facilities that we fund each and every year?
Well, thank you so much, Mayor and Council. First of all, Tyrone Thompson, for the record, Regional Initiatives Coordinator with the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition. That's a big question. It's a small question, but it's a, I mean, and it's a big question. And there could be a lot of reasons why. I know some of the reason is that, well, first of all, we are making a dent, if we're looking at it nationally. Every two years, like Dr. Morris Hibler said, we have to conduct a homeless census. We have to do that in order to be, to qualify and put ourselves in the, in competition for federal dollars to get permanent supportive housing. That's what it's about. We have some renewable projects that are transitional in nature, but housing and urban development is definitely forcing communities to look at housing-first models, putting people into housing, putting those wraparound services, and maintaining and stabilizing them. So we definitely need to do that. If you look at the comparison of 2011 to 2013, we had 9,432 people in our count, based on the methodology that we're given of who we can count through HUD. This year, in 2013, we conducted the count on the 24th of January and we counted 7,355. We know that we have a long way to go. We know that some people still may have been hidden when we made that count, but our community is always commended by HUD because we do a full-on count. We count all of the parcels of land in our community.
So let me ask you this question in relation to the count, first and foremost. How many counts have we taken over the course of the last 10 years?
We have done five.
Okay. And amongst the five counts that we've taken, is there something within your backup or you can share with this council as far as what the count was from, from count one to count five?
I have an executive summary I can give you.
Has it grown? Has it decreased?
We had, let's see, we peaked in 20, I mean, in 2009, I believe, where we had around 13,500. And then we.
So what was the lowest and what was the highest?
The highest was around 13,500.
And what year was that?
And then, actually it was in.
About 2009. And the lowest has been.
2009. And then the lowest is this year, in 2013.
And what is the lowest count? 7,000 roughly?
7,355, yes.
Okay.
But I also wanted to say another reason why people are resistant, like Dr. Morris Hibler said, is because they're dealing with various issues. There are some people that have resources. So if you kind of notice sometimes, if you were out there around the first of the month or so to speak, people are receiving some benefit checks sometimes. And so they're able to live in the hotels, they're able to do whatever they want to do, but come around the 10th of the month to the end of the month, a lot of people are sleeping out. There are a lot of our chronic inebriates in the community. When you go to a shelter, you have to pass a breathalyzer test. If the people really want to stay in the shelter, the shelters will put them to the side from the rest of the population and wait till they come down and the breathalyzer comes out okay. But I think that one of the greatest needs, we've talked about this in our community for a long time, is what we call a wet shelter, where people can come as they are.
You called it a wet shelter?
It's called a wet shelter.
WET.
So you can come inebriated, basically. But you have to increase security, you're going to need medical providers there. Some communities do it. It's a big resource, it has a price tag on it, but that could be a possibility. Sometimes when we just go out into the community, the service-resistant just say, hey, I'm okay. Some people just prefer to be out. Some people don't like rules. And then a lot of people are dealing with the mental health issues. So it's a plethora of concerns and issues. But we do have the outreach teams that are out there through Metro and through our Help Us Southern Nevada teams that are out there daily, that are making connections. You have to, you can't just, there's, there are trust issues. So they're not automatically going to say, okay, I'll pack up and go. So you have to build that rapport. Usually takes a person to like be broken before they really ask for that help.
From a mental health standpoint, who best to serve the mentally ill out on the street? Is it the federal government? Is it the state? Is it the local municipalities? Is it the Regional Planning Coalition in relation to the mental health? Is it the regional homeless? Your thoughts?
Okay. Mayor and council, thank you. For the record, my name is Jody Gerson. I'm the outpatient administrator at Southern Nevada Adult Mental Health. To answer your question, Councilman, it is everybody. It's a collaboration with all services. And currently, right now, we are collaborating through the regional office as well as all the other agencies in the community to serve this population. Anybody who has a mental illness and is homeless, we can provide housing. It's getting them through the door and engaging them is part of the problem that we're facing every day. We are addressing them, we're going out into the communities, we're going out to any of the encampments that are there and engaging these individuals and trying to connect them to services. Sometimes we get them in, but with mental illness, a lot of times, they start to feel better on some of the medications, for example, and then they stop taking the medications and it's a cycle and they go back. So what we try to do is engage them and we're currently opening up a drop-in center. So Monday through Friday, eight to five, at least to initially start our drop-in, they'll have a place to come that's safe, get out of the elements, get services, and we could try to engage them. This won't be for everybody because everybody won't want to come to the drop-in center because everybody's not used in all the services we have in the community. However, it's a start. And it's something that we haven't had in the past that we're trying to currently start right now.
When it comes to mental, the mental ill out on the street, do we have service providers that go out and identify the number of those that are considered mentally ill or do we wait for them to walk through the drop-in center? How does, how does that connection happen? What is the bridge?
Councilman, we actually have an outreach team. I know Help Us Southern Nevada has an outreach team. They are in constant collaboration with Southern Nevada Adult Mental Health and we go out with them to identify those that are mentally ill and start the engagement process so we can get them through the doors. And we identify those that are the high risk and we wrap services around each and every one of them and try to bring them in and engage them in all the services that are available to them and offer them everything.
Just like the count that has taken place the last, oh, five times within the last decade, is there a count where we go out and identify the number of mentally ill as far as extracting the number of mentally ill amongst that 7,000 number? How do we identify how many mentally ill individuals we have out on our streets?
Well, actually, Councilman, there's a two-part process of the count. So we do the visual count on one night, early morning, and then we actually, about a week later, we go out and we survey. So we do like a random survey of people and it'll ask, it has a listing of questions. It'll ask basic demographics and then health issues, mental health issues. And so it's basically self-reporting type of reports that we have and we will.
So someone mentally ill, if I'm hearing this right, someone mentally ill would have to basically say, I'm mentally ill?
Yes. And believe it or not, they do.
Wow.
There are, not everybody, but there are some people, like she said, that are on medications that will say, yes, I have mental health issues.
So in essence, there's no diagnostic as far as for a clinical or clinician to identify someone as mentally ill?
I'm sorry, say that again. I missed the first part.
I said, there's no diagnostic as far as when you all go out and do this report, there's no diagnostic in relation to a clinician identifying someone to be mentally ill. It's a self-report. So if someone is mentally ill and they basically say, I'm mentally ill, that's the report?
That's part of the report.
What about those individuals that don't know that they're mentally ill?
I think the biggest issue, Councilman, Mayor, if I may, is that even if we know someone is mentally ill, we cannot force them into the services unless they are a threat to themselves. So that's really what comes to issue because.
Well, I mean, I get that, but I'm just trying to identify and extract from that 7,000, how many mentally ill people we have out on the street and if in fact, that. And if, in fact, that you're saying, you know, whatever that number may be, how do we get to that number? And who is the clinician to really, um, you know, provide, provide the community with a, a true clinical, uh, response as far as this is the specific number of mentally ill individuals we have, we, we have out on our streets? And what I'm hearing is that, that's not the case.
Well, we have, we go out into the streets with the survey, we also go into the transitional housing programs that we have, and we go into the emergency shelters. So, in some situations, we actually have the professional staff there. Um, but like I said, we always go out on the streets as well. Um, and it can be, we have community volunteers that actually go out and do the surveys, so they aren't the licensed clinicians that could actually diagnose someone.
And during all the counts, um, Southern Nevada Doma Health, we have no less than twenty staff that are going out doing the count um with the community. So, if there is any issues, they've always identified. Also, at all of the events we have, like, for example, Project Homeless Connect, Southern Nevada Doma Health is the, uh, has the mobile crisis team and does all the assessments onsite, so we can identify people at any of these times and bring them right in for services. We also work with Help us Southern Nevada to engage those that are out in the encampments that may be out in the desert, and we're trying to engage. We're constantly going out with them, so we can provide the clinical services onsite.
Final question, Mayor. The, the municipalities, and correct me if I'm wrong, the municipalities that, uh, fund this shared responsibility of homelessness in Clark County as a region. Is Clark County, City of Las Vegas, Henderson, North Las Vegas?
In Boulder City.
In Boulder City. The majority of the funding, when it's, uh, annually, the majority of the funding, what areas, um, is the majority of the money spent?
Okay, actually, I think that's a good segue for the, the next slide.
Thank you.
So, this slide right here, um, depicts all of the, the breakdown of funding, the different jurisdictions. Uh, as a, a region, we're spending about seventeen million dollars a year on homeless. And I think, um, Mayor, if I may, Councilman Barlow, I think that's a great point that you brought up, because a majority of the money that we use prevents people from ever be- getting on the streets, which is our goal, is to provide long-term rental assistance, is to provide the supportive housing. Those are the things that really will help us in homelessness. Um, and so, from this, you can see that everybody is contributing in what, you know, we have our, our COH regional budget, which is what we're here for today. The West Care, uh, Triad Center, which is for chronic inebriates, and also helps for us, um, take people from the hospitals into the, the triage, so that we can alleviate the stress on the, uh, emergency rooms. We have other services, and then we also have our, our housing and, and services and our, um, rental assistance. And all of those things collectively is what's helping us manage the, the homeless population. You know, as I started out, I said we had thirty-three thousand people that have been homeless annually. When, um, Mr. Thompson talks about our number of seven thousand, that is a point in time count. That means on that specific day, at that specific time, that's how many people we saw. But people constantly go, you know, can go into homelessness, and then we can stabilize them. But there's a smaller part, that the more visual part, which is why it's so, been so difficult for us to really, um, even talk to the community about that. Uh, Director Riggelman sits on our community engagement team, and he's been a great asset of how we get the word out to the public about this being a, a community issue and how we can help to solve it. But it is, when you're talking about the, the most difficult individuals who are resistant to services, that is a challenge, and it's a challenge throughout the nation. It's not just a challenge for Las Vegas, but throughout the nation.
Throughout the world.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the regional homeless budget, each jurisdiction plays a pro-rata share of the regional homeless budget based on population. The City of Las Vegas, um, contributes two hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is, um, thirty percent of the total budget. The budget, uh, is used to support the Committee on Homelessness and the Continuum of Care, as well as the Regional Initiatives Office, the Inclement Weather Shelter, the Homeless Management Information System, um, which I think it's also important to note that all of our nonprofits use the Homeless Management Information System, so that we can track the number of times a person is trying to seek services. And it also, um, I think maybe to a little bit of what you were going to, we have what they call the VIP program, which we're starting to catalog those individuals that are service-resistant, so we can track them better. Um, you know, whatever their issue is, maybe addiction or, or mental health, that's separate, but we're just tracking so we can know we've been out to see this person X amount of times, and they're still here. Now, they've been here three years, four years, five years, so on and so forth. So, we're doing a better job of tracking that. And then also the homeless census and evaluation that we do, which I now said is going to be done annually. And that concludes my presentation. Um, staff recommends approval of the inter-local agreement for the regional homeless coordination and Inclement Weather Shelter.
And I'm sure you're using the churches.
Absolutely. They are absolutely, yes.
Okay.
If, uh, Mayor Goodman, if I may add, and Councilman Barlow, um, 'cause I know you're a, a data man. So, we have, we have the, um, actual homeless census. We can get, we can get it to everyone. It's actually on our Help Hope Home website, where, where we, we use that website, again, like we're talking about social media, so our community can know what we're doing. We're very transparent, opportunities for people to volunteer. But, um, you'll have that report, it's about a hundred and thirty pages. We also recently did, conducted a homeless, um, services gaps analysis, which is something that we've wanted in our community for a very long time. And I know you'll be very interested in that, so we'll make sure that we get copies to you on that. And then lastly, as far as the Jimmy Gay Park, the, um, Owens B Street area is concerned, um, one of the services of the regional coordination is that, um, whenever we need to do an intervention where we just see an abundance of tents, um, it just seems like that everyday outreach is not working. Um, we get collect, we come collectively together with law enforcement, all of our service partners, and we create a plan. Um, so when we go out there, we continue to do outreach, but we set a date. We set a date that we say, you know, people have to clear the area. But in order to do so, we have to have the resources such as housing and, you know, so everything that might come up. Um, and I believe there's around fifty people, about fifty people in that area, and it's really important that we get to that community now, because people are encroaching upon, um, personal property and actually camping out in people's backyards. And so, we will be having our coordination meeting tomorrow, um, at Clark County Social Service at nine AM. So, anyone's welcome to come. We are engaging through the Mayor's Faith Forum, um, our homelessness subgroup. Um, we have some of the, the members from the faith-based community coming, um, because they told us, um, you know, hey, it takes for us to really engage people. And that's great, um, and it may, because sometimes when you see that, that service, that business professional, sometimes, um, the homeless attract to them. Sometimes those from the faith community can have a better approach. So, we use that team approach to help people, and, and so, just wanted to share that with you.
And two, I think one of the things is, is you have the drop-in center. Aside from getting it out, the word "out" is, how do people get there? Transportation really is a huge issue of moving people so they can access the services that we're hoping to get them into. So, that's a really whole other piece of the puzzle, regardless of whatever the affliction is that causes them to be homeless. How do you move the people to access that center? So, I mean, this is just something, as you go forward, I know it just seems eternal, and, uh, but the fact that you are making progress, I think it's really incredible, because our population's pretty stable. It's large.
Hey, Mayor, if I could, um, for the transportation, we do have vehicles, um, and we do have access to bus passes as well. Not everybody will take the bus, but we do have staff that do travel training, so we, we do have some accessibility, and we are on a bus line.
Wonderful. That's just great.
And it will be actually on our campus, so they can access all services. So, and we're hoping to extend hours after we go.
Eric, we're just really proud of you, Councilman Barlow.
Yes, just some follow-up thoughts. When you all come before us, there, there's three entities that I, I think that are important that I don't see sitting at the table. You all can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's just that I don't see the three entities. One is the Regional Housing Authority. If, what, if you could speak to that, because they are a great part in relation to the homeless in this community. Also, the Health and Human Services from the state. I haven't seen or heard from Health and Human Services as, as the state is concerned, nor the Southern Nevada Health District, um, when it comes to the homeless. So, if you can just speak to those, I haven't seen it, that's not to say that they're not participating, but assure me, a- a- and where are they?
Okay, well, first of all, I'll, I'll start with the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. Um, we actually have, um, a great partnership. Um, it seems like since the Housing Authority became regionally, I mean, we're really able to make progress, because before it was, it wa- it was difficult. The connection was difficult. But now, we have that connection. We actually have a program called Connection to Home. And what we're doing is, we're working with, um, those homeless that are in emergency shelter, transitional shelter, um, that are ready for permanent housing. And we, we have, um, worked out an agreement where it's a certain ratio of, of openings through the Housing Authority, because we don't want to, um, uh, disregard the current clientele that's trying to get into the Housing Authority. We don't want to disrupt that. But, um, we have, when there are vacancies, uh, we have community partners that have agreed in a MOU, um, that they will provide that intensive case management. Because we said, the last thing we want to do is put them into a permanent housing situation, um, and then they leave. And it, and it's great, great rents. Um, they are able to find, um, some resources for them to maintain the rent, um, low deposits to get in, so we're really appreciative of that. Uh, the second one was the-
Health, the AKA.
The Health District, um, the Health District, whenever we do an intervention, they are always with us. And they're always there to, um, guide us through processes to make sure that, you know, if it is a public health issue, um, that they are at the table. Um, as far as, what was the last one?
Health and Human Services with the state.
Health and Human Services with the state, uh, the Department of Welfare and Supportive Services. They actually sit on our Evaluation Working Group for the Committee on Homelessness. Um, now that we're gearing up with the Affordable Care Act, um, they've, they're playing a major part, um, in helping people, um, that, that gap of people that originally weren't qualifying for services, and now they're gonna be able to qualify. They're really working with the different navigators and the Health Link to get people enrolled, um, starting October first. Um, but they have always been at the table with us.
And, and they have, and, um, in this past legislation, Department, the former Department of Health and Human Services and the former Department of, um, Public and Behavioral Health have now merged. Uh, I said that wrong. I apologize. Um, the, the two merged now, and now we're at the Department of Public and Behavioral Health, so we're one family. And also with, as, uh, Mr. Thompson mentioned, that the ACA coming aboard at our drop-in center, we're gonna have, um, staff members there that are gonna be available to help enroll all of these individuals who will now be qualifying and eligible for services. So, even at our facility and at our facilities as well. It's a big initiative.
Thank you both very much, and thank you, Dr. Hibler, as always. And we'll take a motion, please.
Move for approval.
Thank you. There is motion to approve. Please vote. And please post. And thank you both.
Thank you so much.
Taking this time, very, very informative. And that motion passes. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to item number fifty-four, Obeyance. Item Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Appeal of Work Card Denial for Joshua Anthony Corella, DB, at the Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, ten eight-hundred West Charleston Boulevard. This is in Word Two with Councilman Beers. Um, is the Apple in present? You are in fact Anthony Corella. Joshua Anthony Corella. Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Duddleston, good morning.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. As you know, this item was asked to be held so that the applicant could work with the Olive Garden on getting an affidavit from his employer. Um, the affidavit was included in your confidential binders. Uh, Mr. Corella is asking to be a food server at Olive Garden, and they have offered their support. And so, we would recommend a one-year site-specific work card for a food server, and we will review that administratively in one year and bring back any issues or concerns to you.
Thank you very much. Um, Councilman Beers?
I would move staff recommendation.
Motion to follow staff rec- yes?
Just a quick question, if you don't mind. Um, Karen, when we do site-specific, is it just for the location, um, on that specific street, or does one have an opportunity to move from, in this case, one Olive Garden to the next?
Um, it, site-specific it is for that location, that Olive Garden. Those work cards already have on there what site. So, if they're moving to another location, they need to go back to Metro and, and change that work card anyway.
So, site-specific, meaning the, the specific address on that particular street?
For, uh, uh, that location, that employer, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion. Please vote.
Your Honor, I believe he'll be able to work at any other Olive Garden that's not within city limits. He doesn't need our approval or any other local government. We don't, we're the only government that does this.
Um, well, according to the question, maybe I misunderstood. It is site-specific to this Olive Garden for this candidate?
Within city limits.
Within the city.
Outside city limits. He can work at any Olive Garden.
Your Honor, that, that is correct. Uh, we are the only entity that requires, um, work cards for food servers with, in a restaurant that has an alcohol license. The other entities do not.
Okay. Thank you very much. Please post. Good luck to you.
Mayor, just real quick, I have a question for Karen. I, I would like to speak to you further about that, Karen, in relation to the sites, site-specific and what the other jurisdictions are doing as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, excuse me. Now, we're on to Agenda Item Fifty-five, Resolutions. Our sixty-five-two oh-one-three Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Directing a Study of Proposed Expansion of the Las Vegas Medical District in accordance with the Las Vegas Medical District Study Area Map Words, one of five councilmen and women, Tarkanie and, and Barlow, and, um, Mr. Flynn, or Mr. Adams?
Madam Mayor, uh, Flynn Fag with the Department of Planning, thank you very much. We are here today with a resolution before you to consider a study area for the Las Vegas Medical District. The purpose of this resolution is, number one, to identify the boundaries of the proposed study area, and then, secondly, to outline the activities that we would engage in as part of the study process in expanding the medical district. In looking at the proposed study area, uh, we have the original boundaries of the medical district, which is outlined in orange in the visual on the screen. Uh, it's the area bordered by Alta, Rancho, Charleston, and, uh, Martin Luther King Boulevard there on the east. What we are looking at as part of the study area is incorporating the area that we are coming to refer to as the Medical Mile, and that would be the commercial properties on Charleston Boulevard immediately south and west of the current medical district, as many of the businesses within that area offer support services to the medical facilities within the medical district. One of the things that we do have to keep in mind about that area that we're identifying as the Medical Mile is it does immediately about residential properties, and so, we need to be mindful of any impacts to those existing single-family neighborhoods as we examine this as part of the study area. The other area that we would look at as part of the study area is the, uh, area including Symphony Park and the World Market Center. Uh, as you're aware, Cleveland Clinic does have options on a number of those parcels there. And so, it's important to include that area as part of any future plans for expansion of medical activities. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Adams.
Good morning. Uh, Scott Adams, Deputy City Manager. I want to pick up from here and talk a little bit about, um, what would happen should you, uh, choose to approve this resolution. Uh, as you know, in your, in a prior approval, you approved the city's new economic development strategy, and that reinforced the medical district as one of your high priorities for economic development. If you approve this resolution, you're really letting the stakeholders know in that medical district that you're really putting the full horsepower of the city behind the, the, the development and evolution of that district. So, to that end, there are a number of things that we're gonna be doing moving forward. Uh, one is, we've already done this. We've established a stakeholder advisory committee, where we have, um, asked each of the stakeholders in that medical district, um, the two hospital heads, the heads of all the, the N-GI institutions, the State Hire of Edu- uh, State System of Higher Education, and other major institutions to serve on a stakeholders committee, to really start to look at their own district. Uh, some of the things that they're gonna be doing moving forward is an asset and service inventory, and identify those things they can work together on in shared services. Things like parking and power generation, and whatever it happens to be that, in a common way, helps each other out. The other thing that they're gonna be looking at is, uh, their own master facilities plan. Um, actually do their own expansion planning, and then we'll put all that together to develop one single facilities expansion plan for the entire district. Then, uh, working with our planning department, we fold that master facilities plan into an update of the city's master plan for that district, so we'd start looking at land uses, transportation, and all the infrastructure needs. As you may be aware, the Project Neon project, uh, the rebuild- As you may be aware, the Project Neon project, the rebuild of Interstate 15 has dramatic impacts along that corridor, but it really creates an opportunity for a new front door for the medical district. And then finally, and this is certainly not, not the least important thing, is really working with them to better market that district, not only to the patient population in the region, but as a place to do business for medical business and enterprise. And I'll just, so really, an economic development strategy in more detail than what you saw detailed in our, our new comprehensive economic development strategy for the city's going to be in order. And I'll just leave you and close with one little statistic. We did some statistical analysis of the medical district, and we found in the 89106 ZIP code, which is the ZIP code that most of that district is contained within, there are 4,600 medical jobs related, and it pays an average wage of about $78,000 a year, which is about one and a half times the region's median family income. So if you look, think of that glass half-full theory. If we can fill that glass of that medical district considerably more, we're going to create a lot of high-paying, high-wage medical industry jobs which are really good for our regional economy.
Thank you both very much. And you know me, I'm forever pushing the envelope, so here I go. Knowing that in Ward One, which is where this area medical district lies, and I see the indicia's on the, on the polls now, or power polls, they look great identifying the district. Knowing, too, in the recent redistricting we went into, Councilwoman Tarkanian did get the Tenaya corridor where there is an explosion of hospitals, medical care, diagnostic offices, totally medical. And so, looking to the future, I would highly recommend, in time, and it's probably not part of redevelopment at this time, which this is focusing on, but to somehow this medical district include that corridor because it's healthy, there's a lot of expansion going on there, the offices are filling up the office space. And having driven around this entire community and being out in, in the county and going to Henderson with Rose de Lima out there, I mean, we can end up with medical district one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Comprehensive, this is the center core. And that's why I'm recommending we try to incorporate whether, you know, I know there might be some pushback from that area, but they are in Ward One, and that whole Tenaya with, what is it, Spring Mountain?
Mountain View Hospital.
Mountain View. That's out there. Plus, we have the corridor and to the west of 215 that has a lot of hospitals springing up. But certainly that one corridor down Tenaya, which is in Ward One, too. For the future.
Yes, I, if I could just respond to that. One of the things that really makes this area stand out among all the medical districts in the region is that it's the, the location of the two teaching hospitals, Valley and UMC. It's the location of the primary institutions of higher education, academic medicine, and it has the region's Level One Trauma Center. So when you look at it from the standpoint of the specialty that takes place in this district, it has the highest level of attention and care of any of those districts. So this, you might look at this as the hub of a regional spoke, set of spokes and other subcenters, but this would, we really would vision this as the center of the regional's health, the region's healthcare industry.
And what you're asking today, and I gather you absolutely are behind this, that we adopt this resolution to establish this formally?
Make it an official city policy that this is our medical district and that we would follow the, the course of action as outlined in the resolution.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Councilman?
I, I'm in total support of the expansion of the medical district. As you all know, that Ward Five housed the original medical district for many years until January 1st of 2013 this year, when it was transitioned over to Ward One. And moving forward, I'm looking at the opportunities that avail itself inside of the Symphony Park area, of course, to include the existing medical district. I would like to actually see the lines adjusted and have Martin Luther King to US-95 a part of that. And the reason I bring that forward is because of the realignment that Project Neon is going to cause, acquiring a lot of the commercial development that exists in, between Alta and US-95 on Martin Luther King. I believe that it'll create an opportunity for medical expansion down that corridor, at least between that particular street, versus running it on the interior, on the east side of US-95, no, what is that, I-15? On the east side of I-15, and just basically aligning it straight down Martin Luther King, unless you can tell me otherwise, as far as why it wasn't included.
The, I think that's one that we've actually teed up with a Stakeholders Committee and really posed the question, if they were to move forward with expanding their facilities and they started to find themselves landlocked in the existing medical district, that area that was in gold on the map. There really is nowhere to go without intruding into a single-family neighborhood, other than out Charleston along that medical corridor, or up MLK, up to I-95s as you've suggested. So we will be looking at that corridor.
Well, there's no, there's no residential there today.
No, there isn't. There isn't. And it represents an opportunity for expansion of that district going forward in the future. So we're going to be looking at that simply from the standpoint that I'm not sure that over a long period of time, the existing district's going to have the land available to facilitate what its potential future expansion could, could hold.
So it's on the table there?
I'm sorry?
On the table for future look. Is it, this is just the initial?
We'd like to let this process drive whether we need to go up that corridor or not. I think we're going to find that when you get into that gold areas you see on the map that, they're going to quickly run out of the, the parking lots and vacant parcels that are in that medical district need to go somewhere. And that somewhere is not going to be in a, a single-family residential. It's going to either be out Charleston, as you see in the blue, or it's going to head northward on MLK.
Right. And that's, and that's my argument, as far as, in order to attract and make it attractive for future purposes, if they're included in the onset, then what we have is versus a slanted line, we have almost a perfect square as it relates to the westernmost colored line, the yellow line, if we shoot straight down Martin Luther King and grab the US-95 out to the railroad tracks. Because in, in, in the reason I'm, I'm really trying to push this is the fact that, for example, when US, when the Project Neon comes online, they, they've already acquired a number of the units as far as the storage facilities. They've grabbed the entire tail end of, of Walker Furniture, which, you know, they're having major issues with right now because it could possibly put them completely out of business to include the other spaces that have already been taken down, right at the corner of Martin Luther King and Alta. And so, being that there's the possibility of land being there versus it being, laying dormant and having to come back and expand, being that it's, it's an invisible line today as far as the boundaries is concerned, let's take advantage of the opportunity of, of this commercial corridor that can serve, you know, a potential user specifically for a small medical-type office that can come in and backfill some of the spaces that the state is currently taking down today. They're out there with bulldozers right now, knocking the land out for the expansion of Project Neon. So this would be a perfect spot for, say, for instance, a one or two-story building to come in that would fit a medical office space use or a small clinic. Because after the, the state knocks down these buildings, we're going to have vacant land. So what better opportunity now than to basically have the line straightened and moving forward?
Councilman, are you suggesting adding the, expanding the gold boundary that currently flanks Interstate 15?
That's correct.
Behind the World Market Center and moving it to, up to the MLK Boulevard to 95?
MLK and US-95, yes.
I just wanted to make sure I was hearing you right.
Yes.
I know, having asked Mr. Cervantes about Project Neon, to make sure that we were all knowing what was going to happen and when it was going to happen, one of the things was, and they're in constant dialogue with Wa-, Walker Furniture, and I believe they have resolved the issues that are there, so they can continue to operate. From what I, and I may be incorrect, because I'm, while you're in, including this, and Councilman Barlow, and again, my suggestion about Tenaya, I'm pulling myself back, which I'm assuming that you're saying that this is the beginning step, and then everything with the committee that's involved, or commission, or whatever they're being called, will then look to the next step, which may very well, as Project Neon solidifies, move itself in one direction or another.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Flynn, we'll be coming back to you with revised medical district master plan that would show the revision of boundaries to incorporate the things we've talked about.
Exactly. This is the start of a process. As we go through the exercise of looking at the expansion of the existing facilities there, again, we may push outside of this initial boundary that we've shown. And so, consideration of the MLK corridor, certainly that's something that we're looking at.
But, but today, you're, you're asking us to approve the boundaries as it, as it exists, correct?
No, we're asking you to approve a study area boundary.
Right. And I'm asking that the study area include Martin Luther King Boulevard.
And the other piece that I would add, and if that's going to be his motion to move it, or however you wish to do it, that is, you go forward with the maps and you come back for further presentation, if you would make sure that we are updated on what's happening with Project Neon and whatever else Mr. Cervantes has in his pocketbook.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, so ma'am?
Do you want to make them?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. My, my motion would be to move to follow staff's recommendation with one adjustment in the site plan that is submitted, that the westernmost portion of the yellow line that wraps I-15 today, come back with the alignment down Martin Luther King to US-95 for the study of the Las Vegas Medical District. And also with the recommendation that you brought forward as far as the Tenaya and Cheyenne Medical District corridor.
Well, if I may, Councilman, why don't you do your suggestion, leave Tenaya out, because I looked Mr. Adams in the eye. And he knows I've been beating this. It is, it's a dying horse, but it's not dead. And so I assume, as we grow up and become more sophisticated, it may, in fact, end up being out there as that, that little corridor grows bigger and better, as it's doing every day.
It could be, and I think it serves as an example of the potential of this district. We targeted healthcare in that district, and you see what there, there is today. So it, it serves as a great example of what we're trying to accomplish here, too.
So by relinquishing that from my plea, I mean, just don't forget that it's still out there as a bell ringer. Because I want to support what you, as staff, are recommending, and can see this is sort of as the first step we want to take, and then your committee and all the input, you're going to come back to us, then we can add these other pieces. But there is a motion now.
Yeah, the motion is to realign the western line of the US-95 and have it come straight down Martin Luther King to US-95.
Okay, there's a motion?
That'll be my motion.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Pardon? I meant to vote, they recommended leave it as it is, as a first step. It was not in, I'm assuming that what Councilman Barlow intends will come in the future. I just interpreted differently. It's not a vote against my dear Councilman Barlow.
It's okay, ma'am.
Please post. Oh, it did. And it carried. You saw it. How come I didn't see it? Thank you. We will now move on to Agenda Item 56. R-662013, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Finding the Fifth Amendment to Option Disposition and Development Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas and Larch Properties, Inc., Regarding Property Located Southwest, South of the Southwest Corner of West Lake Me Boulevard, North Martin Luther King Boulevard, APNs 139-21-313-021 and 005. A portion of the Las Vegas Enterprise Park to be in the best interest of the public. This is in Councilman Barlow's Ward Five. And hello, gentlemen. Please, Mr. Arnt.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council. For the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. With me today is Richard Gordon, President of Larch Properties. And be, on behalf of our department and the city, I'd like to thank Richard and his team at large for a great partnership in Las Vegas Enterprise Park. This project is to amend our existing option disposition and development agreement for new retail development inside Las Vegas Enterprise Park. We originally went to contract back in 2011, and since then, Larch has developed the Dollar General Grocery Store and now has a new store, El Pollo Loco, to develop inside their shopping village in Enterprise Park. We had set purchase terms back in 2011, and those purchase terms essentially are staying the same, which is a blended purchase price of $5.50 per gross square foot, which was the higher of two appraisals back in 2011, and is still at the higher of two appraisals today. What we're doing today is we're basically re-subdividing the lot as far as the portions that Larch is going to be purchasing to follow in conjunction with how the retail stores are being developed on the site. So what you see on the overhead today is actually the original rendering of how the development was going to take place. If you look at, to the left of the rendering is the footprint for the Dollar General store. And then we had remaining two parcels, to the top right, parcel A, and to the bottom, parcel B, which are going to be two retail parcels. I'm now going to turn to another rendering. And what you see here is the two parcels that were going to be on the right, we're, through Larch, is looking to develop those now as essentially three parcels, and this is to accommodate the new store, El Pollo Loco, which is going to be developed on Martin Luther King. So the bot-, essentially what's happening is that bottom parcel, which was labeled parcel B in the contract, we're now splitting up as B1 and B2. So the parcel on the bottom right, which is there, which is just under an anchor, is going to be developed for the store. In addition to that, we are now splitting up the purchase price, since they're not buying that whole piece. So the purchase price for this new parcel, parcel B2, will be $231,946. The remainder of the purchase price will be spread over parcels A and B. Again, that blended purchase price is staying the same, so Larch is not renegotiating terms. They're honoring the original term that they did, as far as their purchase offer. The other thing that we need to do in order to make this project work is we're offering a non-exclusive access easement on the south of the property, south of the lot, well, which El Pollo Loco is going on. So there's a 5,400-square-foot easement. It's a little bit difficult to see, but if, if the guys in the back could zoom in on the, the bottom there. Zoom in on this. On that spot there, that cross-hatched area there is a non-exclusive access easement. So we're not selling this. The city's going to retain ownership, but this will provide access into the lot to service the store. It'll also serve, service the lot south, the vacant land south of El Pollo Loco and what land Larch is purchasing. So again, this is to accommodate the store. We're excited to have a new retail tenant in Enterprise Park in West Las Vegas. We still believe this is an area of the community that's underserved, and again, we're really appreciative of the partner that we have in Larch Properties. With us today is Richard Gordon, President of Larch. I'd like, invite Richard to say a few words about the store and about the, the timing, and about what we expect to see in the months to come in Enterprise Park.
Thank you, Bill, and good afternoon, Members of the Council. Shana Tava, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilman Coffin, I really have to say, that was, I found that very interesting, your historical perspective on the Yucca situation earlier. I, you know, I moved here in 1993, but many of those things I had no idea about. So if you can get that word out a little bit more, I think more of the public would get behind you, to the extent that if, if they aren't, as it is. But that was very interesting, and thank you for that. So I think Bill covered mostly everything. We are very fortunate to have done well with the Dollar General, and we're continuing with that. We've been working very hard to get We've been working very hard to get tenants, and the next one in line is El Pollo Loco. The lease is not signed yet, we're hoping to have it signed in the next three to four weeks. We're in lease negotiations, I would say 95-plus percent, gotta hedge a little bit. We're pretty much there, but I feel very confident that will get resolved in the next, those issues will be resolved very soon, and we'll have that lease signed in short order. Once the lease is executed, they will immediately move to preparing construction documents and submitting for a permit. After their permit issues, they typically are between four to six months, 120 to 180 days to build, so there's no reason why they couldn't be open in the second, and certainly the third quarter of 2014.
Great, very exciting news. Councilman Barlow, it's yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to digress for just a second to take the council back to 2007, when I ran for office for Ward 5. And at that particular time, this particular neighborhood was having some major issues as it relates to bonds that had moved out of their current location at the Edmund Town Center in 2004. So the community was out, was without a grocery store for approximately three years at this particular time in 2007. And as I talked to more and more residents in the community, their main concern was, Ricky, we really need to have a grocery store in this community. And so I worked feverishly upon, after I got on the council, to travel around the United States literally, looking and speaking to a number of grocery store chains in regards to coming into the Lake Mead, Martin Luther King corridor where the residents wanted a grocery store. After traveling around the U.S. literally, I came back to a phone call from a gentleman by the name of Hank Gordon, which is Richard's father. And he says, Ricky, I've been watching and listening to what you've been trying to do at this corner, have you had any luck? I says, no, I haven't had any luck. And as you all know, that Mr. Gordon family, Larch Properties, they're all over the valley, and all of their corners are pristine to this day, they own their properties, they do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And he says, you know, Ricky, I'm always up for a challenge. And he literally took me by the hand, and took me to my first ICS, ICSC convention. And he says, I wanna introduce you to a number of people, some folks that I believe that we'll get in and have an opportunity to talk to as far as trying to sell this corner. And during that time, he introduced me to the representatives from, actually, three, three representatives. One was Dollar General, two was Chase Bank, and three was El Pollo Loco. And that was roughly 2008. And today, we have two of the three entities that Mr. Gordon introduced me to. As you all very well know, this past March, we opened the Dollar General inside the Enterprise Park at Lake Mead and Martin Luther King, and now what's before us is El Pollo Loco, prepared 99%, almost complete.
Don't wanna see it's complete until it's signed, but.
Right, I understand, it hasn't been signed yet, but it's 99% complete, and within the next three to four weeks, I'm looking forward to coming out with an announcement, lock, stock, and barrel, as they would say with Larch Properties, to announce the groundbreaking of El Pollo Loco on this corner that has gone without for a very long time as far as amenities for the community in which this store is going to service. For many years, and I have to give Tom Arl a lot of credit for coming in, he was the first retail chain as far as McDonald's coming in on the corner of Martin Luther King and Lake Mead, he's been there for, by himself for a very long time, so hopefully this will help him with his stock as well, as far as bringing more people into this specific corridor. But this is, this process, although it takes a long time to get it done, Mayor, I'm really excited that Larch Properties stuck to their guns, and in particularly your father, Richard, Mr. Hank Gordon, who has never left my side as it relates to assisting me in pulling this corner together, and so I'm elated and very.
I cut off everybody, so sorry. Back on.
I guess, I guess the mayor's saying I'm speaking too long, she cut me off. But I'm just excited, Mayor, I really am, because this has been a long time coming. And so, and so therefore, I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you as well, Richard.
Thank you very much.
Moving forward, 'cause I know your dad wanna hang his shoes up, and turn it.
He keeps trying, but somehow he just never seems to hang on.
And turn the will over to you, and so I'm looking forward to working with you as we continue to really unfold this, this particular Enterprise Park. And of course, Bill Arnt, you and your entire staff has been great to work with, as it relates to a lot of the developers that have come through and basically sold us a lot of dreams, but those dreams are still dreams, because today, we have a reality before us. And so for that, Mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions on this item.
Thank you, you are a tenacious man, my dear Mr. Councilman Barlow, and that's why this happened. And I have to tell you, when I was campaigning, I was in there with both of these fine gentlemen trying to get a grocery store also then in your ward downtown, somewhere on Fremont Street, and you see how successful I was. So therefore, kudos to you, we still don't have a grocery store in the heart of downtown.
And Ms. Quinsey, very, never lets me forget it, I'm sorry.
But I must say, thank you to Councilman Coffin, 'cause we do have White Cross Market, so at least, and we do have a small one next to Lady Sylvia, so. Anyway, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, you're three for three, keep going, Councilman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck, thank you, very exciting. Okay, we'll move on to Item Number 57, and Recommending Committee, Bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill Number 2013-32. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2013-32, First Amendment, in order to update the city's gaming regulations to add business licenses categories for feasible operators of interactive gaming, interactive gaming service providers, and manufacturers of interactive gaming systems, and provide for related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, this motion, please vote.
That's First Amendment.
First Amendment.
Sorry. And please post. Motion carries, Bill Number 2013-36. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Bill Number 2013-36, First Amendment, in order to update the city's alcohol licensing regulations, including the adjustment of licensing categories, updating corresponding zoning, gaming, and other regulatory provisions regarding alcohol-related uses, and provide for related matters.
Move for approval, subject to First Amendment.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item Number 59, Bill Number 2013-37. Councilman Barlow, you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman, Bill Number 2013-37, in order to update the city's regulations regarding obstructions or encroachments within the city's right-of-way, and provide for related matters.
Move for approval, First Amendment.
Thank you, this motion, please vote, and please post.
Brad, was that a First Amendment?
It wasn't, but.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
Okay, this is Agenda Item Number 60, Bill Num, I'm so sorry, we're on a roll here. Motion carries, Agenda Item Number 60, Bill Number 2013-43. Councilman Barlow, you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
Councilman, Bill Number 2013-43, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make it as a subject of laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and provide for related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, this motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 61, Bill Number 2013-44. Councilman Barlow, you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Your Honor, Bill Number 2013-44, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make it as a subject of laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and provide for related matters.
Move for approval.
This is a motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, Bill Number 62's been abayed to the 18th of September. Moving on to Bill Number 63. Item 63 through 68, Bills Number 2013-35, and Bills Number 2013-38 through 2013-42 are eligible for adoption at a later meeting, and we will move on to new bills. No public hearing on these items, bills are read into the record. So, Item 63 through 74.
Sixty-nine.
It would be, Item Number 75 has been, excuse me.
Sixty-nine.
Item 69 through 75, Bills 2013 through 46, 2013-52 will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Tuesday, September 17th. City Attorney, to rec, to read, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, I would like a former employee of the month, Fausti, to read them today.
Former employee.
I formerly enjoyed this duty. Bill Number 2013-46, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to update the standards and procedures for obtaining approval of early grading permits, and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2013-47, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to update the processes and requirements pertaining to the installation of common area and off-site improvements, and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2013-48, in order to amend the Town Center Development Standards Manual regarding the special use permit standards applicable to secondhand dealers, to allow the sale of firearms on both a consignment and non-consignment basis, as well as the purchase and exchange of firearms, and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2013-49, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to update the standards applicable to live-work units within the live-work overlay district, and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2013-50, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to establish an alternate, alternative schedule and procedure for the submission and processing of tentative maps, and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2013-51, in ordinance relating to short-term residential rentals, establishing licensing requirements and regulations, as well as updated zoning regulations pertaining thereto, and providing further related matters. And Bill Number 2013-52, in order to amend the city's public peace, morals, and welfare regulations to provide for a separate curfew, specific to downtown Las Vegas, to amend the penalties for curfew violations, to provide certain penalties for apparent or legal guardian permitting a minor's violation of curfew laws, and to provide further related matters.
Thank you very much. These new bills are assigned to Councilman Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin, and that again will be on the 17th, 9:00 a.m. in the clerk's office. We will now move on to Bill Number 76, excuse me, Agenda Item Number 76, EOT 50316, Site Development Plan Review, applicant owner Las Vegas Valley Water District for Possible Action, on a request for extension of time of an approved Site Development Plan Review, SDR 27842, for a 675-square-foot utility installation on 12.9 acres at 2215 North Buffalo Drive. This is in Ward 4, excuse me, Councilman Anthony, staff recommends approval.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Corey Ennis, 1001 South Valley View Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant, extension of time request for a Site Development Plan Review, SDR 27842.
Thank you.
On July 16th, 2008, the City Council approved a Site Development Plan Review submitted by the Las Vegas Valley Water District for construction of site improvements at the Harvey Eluse Reservoir located at 2215 North Buffalo Drive. Notice of final action was filed with the city clerk's office on July 17th, 2008, and at this time, the design phase of the project is 100% complete. However, due to economic conditions and budget concerns, the project has been placed on hold. At this time, the district respectfully requests a time for proposed site improvements associated with the previously approved SDR 27842. We concur with any staff recommendations, and at this time, open any questions.
Any questions here?
Thank you.
Councilman Barlow.
You mentioned economic hardships, what is the cost for the development?
I'm not sure the exact cost of the development, but it would be dependent on budgetary concerns going forward. We do plan to go forward with the project, it's just going to be dependent on budgetary concerns.
And what is the time that you're looking for as far as the extension?
A three-year time extension, three-year extension.
Three-year time extension, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, Mayor, pro temp.
Mr. Fag, I thought in briefing you had said that we're gonna ask for a two-year extension.
It's a three-year extension.
It is three years?
Yes, I need to correct myself, thanks.
Okay, I'll follow staff's recommendation for approval.
There's a motion, please vote, and please post. Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to Item Number 77. This is a public hearing, EOT 4985, want to ban its item, non-conforming use, applicant owner Strata Vegas LLC for possible action, and a request for an extension of time of a non-conforming beer/wine cooler-on sale establishment, at 2411 East Bonanza Road, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff recommends denial, and this is a public hearing, but of course, Mr. Fag, why do we recommend denial?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Flynn Fag, Department of Planning, the recommendation for denial is because this is the third request for an extension of time for a non-conforming use. As it is a third extension, that's the reason for our recommendation for denial. The applicant sent me an email saying that she was on her way, I don't know if she is here yet, but I know that she would like to be heard. If we need to trail that item, we might do so.
Councilman?
The Councilman, so fields.
Your Honor, it's unlikely that the person would get here before the, we only have one more item on our agenda. I think that, I think I'd like to give them a chance to speak, but they've never contacted me in my office until yesterday afternoon, so I'd like to move to obey this item for a month, to the first meeting in October, so we give them time to gather their thoughts and explain what it is that they intend to do with the property.
That's October the 2nd.
There's a motion to obey this till October 2nd. Please, please vote, and please post. And therefore, Mr. Fag, can you intercept her and just tell her, don't bother, or take a slow road to October 2nd? That motion carries, thank you very much. And Items Number 78 through 81 have been obeyed until also October 2nd? They do not need to be read, correct? Okay, Item Number 82, ROC 50415, Public Hearing, applicant, Best Fallis, Inc., owner Cheetoc, or Chetoc Development Corporation for Possible Action, and a request for review of condition of a previously approved special use permit, SUP 25060, to delete condition number five, which states, quote, "The sale of individual containers of any size of beer, wine coolers, or screw-cap wine is prohibited. All such products shall remain in their original configuration as shipped by the manufacturer. Further, no repackaging of containers into smaller groups smaller than the original shipping container size shall be permitted." At 2301 South Las Vegas Boulevard, C2, General Commercial Zone, this is in Councilman Coffin's Ward 3, and staff recommends approval. It's a public hearing, which I declare open. Applicant present?
Hello.
Or representative?
My name is Laura Dreah, 520 South 4th Street, here on behalf of Ramsey-Suomen. I'd like to thank staff for their positive recommendation, and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions here? Councilman Coffin, yours.
Understand that indirectly, we have no concerns from Metro, or at least it does not have a history of calls at that area, could you expand on that?
The staff report specifically says there's been three calls to that subject site, which has a hotel on it, a gun club, and our store, and none of these calls were related to our store nor the gun club.
Do those other tenants on that property support the application?
Yes.
They do, okay. Okay. I noted we had some objections come in, but most of them were from out of town, and I couldn't tell if they were landowner, investor owners, or, you know, other people that have an interest, or sometimes people just protest everything changing. One person had a problem, he'd like to know what business is applying. He wants transparency. Now, this is a gentleman from Redmond, Washington, but wouldn't the backup material that's on the website, Flynn maybe have to answer this question, wouldn't that have shown a little more information?
Yes, absolutely. We do have all the backup materials available on the city website. By going to meetings and agendas on the City of Las Vegas webpage, you can reference the material that's submitted as backup to this application.
Okay. Your Honor, I'm gonna move for approval because this corner, they're very close to the corner of Sahara. It's tourists-oriented. It's not been a habitual way for prostitutes and drug dealing, contrary to some areas a little farther north on the Boulevard. So I think we'll be all right with this permission. So I move for approval.
All right. And I did not invite everybody from the public to come speak to this. Anybody have any comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that public portion. And there is a motion, please vote and please post. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda item eighty-three, I instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you very much. Citizen participation. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the City Council. No subject may be acted upon by the City Council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, any single subject, or this amount of time, any single speaker's allowed may be limited. Any member of the public who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come forward and state your name.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty, North Nineteenth Street, Councilman Coffin. Your summary on item number fifty was perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard?
He was kinda short that time.
He was short.
He was so short, I don't even wanna believe it. Whatever. My name's Anthony Hodges, and I went over to the county yesterday to thank them for all of the years that I've been bothering with, I mean, going over, bothering them. But the city, this city and the city of San Diego, they're two city governments. It's always been very special, but this particular city is really, I have, I poured my heart into this one. The city of Las Vegas, on a national, international level, is very, is very well recognized throughout the world. So I wanna say that many things that I've did over the years really came through here, and I even made great history with y'all here. But the main thing is, because of my age and everything, I won't be able to be coming back anymore, but I would like to come back to this City Council once in a while, let's say hello, whatever, if I can be, be able to stand up to do something. But anyway, me and my wife celebrate our fifth and fourth wedding anniversary tomorrow.
Congratulations.
And I wanna say, it's been a pleasure coming down here. Mr. Barlow, I'll come, you still have your thing at the coffee thing, whatever, on Thursdays?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Well, if I must double or something, dash on by, whatever. But thanks for letting me come by over the years.
Always.
And I'll always be obligated to the city of Las Vegas because a lot of history was made here, and I do love you, and if I get, have another chance, I'll come back some other time.
Thank you.
But thank you for letting me stop by.
Good health to you, and congratulations on your anniversary.
And feel free to bring your wife over tomorrow as well, Ms. Hodges.
It's good knowing you, sir, and I wanna remember me and you from our good old electrical days, remember?
Mr. Hodges?
You remember what, remember when we drove, used to be electrician?
I remember.
We didn't think of the past, but whatever. But I still love you.
Still electrician, Tony.
Thank you.
Mr. Hodges?
Anyone else? Yes.
I was just gonna tell Mr. Hodges to feel free to bring his wife over tomorrow as well.
Okay, sir, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Hearing done. We'll close that portion of the meeting. And agenda item eighty-five, council member recognition. Comments made by individual City Council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the City Council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of the council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? Starting to my right, Mayor Protam first.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. First of all, I'd like to invite everyone to come out and support the ALS of Nevada, their annual Las Vegas Walk and Roll event. It's called the Home Run, Five K Run for ALS of Nevada, will be held September twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, at Police Memorial Park, which is right behind the Northwest Area Command on West Cheyenne. The registration for the event begins at six a.m. to six thirty a.m. The opening ceremony is at seven forty-five a.m. The Five K Run begins at eight a.m., and the, right after that is the, the walk, and then at eight forty-five, we'll hand out awards and closing ceremonies. The, the Walk and Roll is, is a great way for families to come together. The Five K Run, they're having a contest for the favorite jersey, awards for best-dressed top runners. I'd also like to just let you know about ALS of Nevada and what exactly they're involved in, why they hold this event, and what, what the money that they raise is used for. It helps ALS patients and families to live as full and as normal a life as possible, to aid patients through the loan of equipment, to serve as liaison, linking the ALS patient family to available resources and information, to educate and inform the general public as to the nature of ALS, to encourage and support scientific research for the prevention, care, treatment, and cure of ALS, to increase awareness of ALS in all levels of government, in an effort to expand government support of research and illicit programs to make treatment and care accessible and affordable for all ALS patients. Again, that's gonna be September twenty-first at Police Memorial Park at, in the morning, opening ceremonies at seven forty-five. And second, I'd like all the businesses in Ward four, invite them to come and join me in my free Ward four Business Network. This is a way for businesses in Ward four to come together, talk about some of the issues that are occurring, try to promote commerce in Ward four, and support and encourage new business development in not only the city of Las Vegas, but specifically in Ward four. The Ward four Business Network will meet Thursday, September nineteenth, six p.m., at the Durango Hills Community Center at three five two one North Durango. Our guest speaker will be Sean Fellows, Director of Government Affairs for the Greater Las Vegas Association of Realtors. He will discuss commercial and residential real estate markets in northwest Las Vegas. And again, when we're done with the presentation, we can have the businesses that show up from Ward four talk amongst themselves and see how we can help each other out. And that is it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three announcements. I'll hold the missing juvenile till the end. I know David Ruggiman's office.
I'll come back to you then, for the very tail end.
If you'd like to, I'll just do these.
No, you do your first, and then we'll come back for the missing children.
I know David Ruggiman's office sent this out in a news release today. The, we are accepting applications for the annual Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program. Grant application process is now open through November's twenty-second. YNAP offers grants up to a thousand dollars for youth to create and implement neighborhood-based service learning projects of their own design. The program requires youth to match the city's grant with cash, volunteer time, or in-kind services and goods donated for the project. Projects are required to take place in the city limits. Applicants are encouraged to attend one of two workshops scheduled for September twenty-fifth and October first, which, those will be held right here at City Hall. I think it's important to get that message out there so we get more youth in this community engaged in the civic process. Also, Mayor and council members, I am holding a town hall meeting tomorrow night, September fifth, and to discuss the flood concerns that are occurring out in Ward six and Centennial Hills. It will be at six p.m. September fifth tomorrow at Centennial Hills Active Adult Center located sixty-six oh one North Buffalo Drive. I will have representatives there from the Regional Flood Control District, as well as representatives from our own city staff, in regards to what's going on with the floods, why they're occurring, and what we're doing about it.
Excellent.
You wanna hold that till the end?
Yeah, I'll come right back to you. Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. The September twenty-first is about two, three Saturdays off, and on that date, we're gonna be having a computer and electronic recycling event at the Elks Lodge in conjunction with a charity in town called Computers for Kids. Usually, we let, or at least I do, let computers pile up in my den because I'm concerned about getting the hard drives wiped, so I don't wanna throw them away. And that's exactly what these people do. They wipe the hard drives, and then if the computers are current enough, they repurpose them for kids, making them available in conjunction with a partnership with Microsoft to kids eligible for free and reduced lunch at school for like twenty-five, fifty bucks a machine. So it's a great way to get your computer, if it's new enough, recycled and into circulation, helping a needy family. In the meantime, those computers that are too old, which are most of the ones in my den, you can safely dispose of them at this event. That again, will be at the Elks Lodge on Saturday, September twenty-first, from eleven in the morning until two o'clock. The Elks Lodge is right next to Hyde Park at, close to Charleston and Valley View. Also, on October fifth, this will be something new, in conjunction with Council, Councilman Anthony and myself, Mayor Protam, Anthony and myself, we're gonna be having a Taste of Shakespeare in Summerlin. The whole community is invited. It's not just for folks that live in Summerlin. It'll be at the Hills Park, and there'll be three stages going on with snippets from all of the, I think, all the major Shakespeare plays, produced by some very talented despians we have in our community that, that have grown up to specialize in Shakespeare. So that should be a very, very good time. Be remiss without mentioning our, our sponsors for this that are helping pay the bills and make it possible. They include Howard Hughes Company, Boyd Gaming, and Stations Casinos. And then final item I have is on October nineteenth, we'll have the Ward two Trunk or Treat Car Show and Halloween Festival. We mentioned this, this early because we like all these car aficionados to get signed up. And here's the information on our screen. Additionally, you can call our office, two two nine six four oh five, or lasvegasnevada.gov backslash trunkortreat. We'll also get you the same information. Look forward to seeing not only the classic car community out there, but also the typically large group of youngsters that bring their trick-or-treat bags out and go from trunk to trunk. Once in a while, once in a while, they get a trick. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. Ward three's busy this beginning of fall, and we're very proud to announce that coming up in just a week from this date today, September eleventh, will be the first meeting of four on the Five Points Walkable Community Plan. And for those of you who've been here a long time, Five Points is generally referred to that area where Fremont, Charleston, and Twenty-Fifth Street, Eastern, come together. And it's, it's an old community, and it's one which is heavily car-dependent, and people there, elderly and lower income, need some help in determining how we can get more services that would be within walking distance. And so, walkability is, has a lot to do with how far you have to walk, or ride your bike, or push a cart to get your, to get your supplies and services for a living. So if you don't know what walkability is, come on over to the meetings. We have four of them scheduled, two in September. The first one will be at Chuck Minkler Center on Mojave in the evening, and then the next one, the twenty-fourth, East Las Vegas Community Center. We'll have two in October, which I'll give further information on at that time, in two weeks at our next meeting, but suffice to say, we'll have plenty of opportunities to learn about it. Also, we have a nice party coming up, and I guarantee good weather for this one, on the fourteenth, a week from September, Neighborhood Park Party at Doug Selby Park, Sand Hill, near, it's, it's kind of on the east side, but it's hard to define it because you've got one of our drainage areas, a Sloan Channel, I think it is, running through there. So you have an adult park on one side and a children's park on the other. Selby is named for our great former city manager, Doug Selby, and he deserves that accolade. So noon, two p.m., we'll have, we'll have a bounce house, we'll have face painters, we'll have the councilman in live, and hopefully, he won't be mistreated by everybody. We'll have some hot dogs and refreshments. So please, come on out and have a good time. Teen Shopping Day comes up Saturday, September twenty-first, and this is for kids who don't have a lot of money, but I tell you what, if they show up with a high school ID, they will be able to get some free clothing that might help supplement what they have. And that'll be at the East Las Vegas Community Center at Eastern and Stewart, and that is Saturday, September twenty-first, nine a.m. to one p.m. High school-aged kids, bring an ID. Tuesday, the twenty-fourth is our day. We look forward to annually, our budget, our council budget, our Ward three council budget, most of it, almost half of it, is spent delivering school supplies on an annual basis to all thirteen elementary schools. We bring in a large truckload of material, and it is, it's made, it's made possible, obviously, by the taxpayers who support the city, and our personal budget goes to this because there's nothing better than giving something to the schools to help supplement what the kids can't afford, the parents can't afford, and the school district runs out of money for. So we supply basics. There are no backpacks given. It's all stuff that's consumable, from Kleenex to notepads, just everything that they need. So that'll be on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, and I think members of the trustees, the Board of Trustees of the, the school district will be there to help in some cases. Any member of the council is welcome to come along. And finally, we have our last movie of the year called Wreck-It Ralph, out at Freedom Park. Guarantee perfect weather in the dusk. The movie will probably start a little earlier than seven-thirty because dusk really, at that time, is not coming earlier than seven-thirty. Wreck-It Ralph's a great cartoon movie, and I know that people who, you know, really wanna just kinda get out, hang out, fall asleep in the park should they choose, they can do it while the kids are watching the movie. Laying their blankets, blankets and folding chairs will provide the popcorn, bottled water, and the movie. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow.
Of course, the first Thursday of every month, Coffee with the Councilman, and I see Mr. Hodges and Mr. Farlow. I'm pretty sure I'm gonna see you both there tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to hanging out with you two. And of course, the rest of the business community in the residents of Ward five, the first Thursday of every month at Starbucks located at Bonanza and Rancho. That's from nine a.m. until ten a.m. So please come out and hang out with me and talk to me about what's going on in your business or in the community, and seeing how we can work collectively and collaboratively. In addition to that, this is a great application that a lot of the community groups and neighborhood associations look forward to each and every year, and also introducing it to those of the community who would like to participate, and that is the Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program, which is also coined as YNAP. This is a grant that offers a thousand dollars for youth to create and implement neighborhood-based service learning projects of their own design. Applicants are encouraged to attend one or two of the workshops scheduled September twenty-fifth and October first, from five thirty p.m. to six thirty p.m. here at City Hall located at four ninety-five South Main Street. And of course, during ceremonial today, we all announced the great opportunity through the USTA, the Free Tennis in September Program. Register now for free tennis clinics throughout September, throughout the month of September at www.usstanevada.com. Any Southern Nevada child or adult aged three and older may participate and receive a free USTA Nevada membership or USTA Junior membership ages ten and younger. So please come out. Also, this program is taking place inside of, inside of the newly renovated Lorenzi Park, at the Lorenzi Racquet Club, inside of Lorenzi Park. In order to sign up there, you may call seven nine two eight three eight four, or register or complete a registration form online, once again, at usta-nevada.com. And Southern Nevada Strong will be hosting a program also for, for residents, and you can feel free to go on my website and pull that information up. I'm trying to find it, Mayor, but I lost it. But feel free to go on my website and just contact my office. We're looking forward to your participation out at the Pearson Community Center coming up soon. So we wanna make sure that we have the entire community involved. And I think I just found it. One second. Oh, just, just, you know what? It'll, it'll be on my webpage. How about that? www.lasvegasnevada.gov forward slash Ward five, the Southern Nevada Strong Program taking place at Pearson Community Center. Please come out and participate. Look forward to your attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we get back to Councilman Ross, I hope all the citizens will join me and join others and remembrance of the victims of September eleventh, when we honor them throughout the city and around our community. the city and around our community, their families, and our nation next week. I'll be on hand at 6:55 AM for the ringing of the bells at Fire Station Number Five at 10:20, Hinson Street, Ward One. Our official memorial ceremony begins at Fire Station Number Five at 9:30, Hinson, which is located off of Charleston between Decatur and Valley View, and of course, everyone's welcome to attend. That's just one of several ceremonies that will be going on. Please welcome, again, this happens to be in the county, but we have such a diverse, wonderful community, it's good to celebrate, and we can never miss the Greek Food Festival, so we're back into the Italian, San Gennaro. Please welcome to town again our fabulous San Gennaro Festival for the best of Italian food, customs and culture, great music, and you can't miss that extraordinary celebration. I always load up to bring food home. I'll be joining the festival procession on Wednesday, September 11th, at 7:00 PM, at the Target, Kohl's Shopping Plaza, Interstate 215, and Flamingo. So I hope you'll come out, especially if you're hungry. Finally, please join me along with Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian for Ward One at our next Coffee with the Mayor, which will be held Thursday, the 19th, the day after our next city council, at 8:00 AM until 9:30 at M&amp;M Soul Food Cafe, located on the south part of Charleston, right at Valley View. It's at 3923 West Charleston Boulevard. It's at the intersection of Charleston and Valley View, just a little bit to the west. And Councilwoman and I look forward to meeting with you and hearing your concerns and having a good time. Our next city council meeting, of course, will be held Wednesday, September 18th, here at Council Chambers, beginning at 9:00, and the day before, 9:00 AM, Clerk's Office, the recommending hearings. And so, back to you, Councilman Ross.
You know, Mayor, I gained 10 pounds, I'll just show up at San Gennaro, automatically. In our continued partnership with Nevada Childseekers, Mayor and council members, we do have a missing young lady, Selena Wozeney. She's 17 years old, five foot two, 125 pounds, brown eyes, black hair. She was last seen August 21st in the area of North Jones and West Galwin Road. She was wearing, last seen wearing a white t-shirt and shorts, and she may be carrying a bag with personal belongings. She does have a upper lip pierced on the right side and the left side of her bottom lip. If anyone has any information leading to the whereabouts of this young lady, please contact Nevada Childseekers, 702-458-7009, or the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department at 702-828-3111. Let's bring this young lady home. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and if you're hearing us, Selena, please go home, or contact an authority, please. So, Councilman Barlow, one more item?
Yes, I found my, the item I was looking for. Southern Nevada Strong Open House. Southern Nevada Strong invites you to an open house from noon to 3:00 PM, Saturday, September 14th, at the Pearson Community Center located at 1625 West Cary, and this is the regional planning initiative to better integrate transportation, housing, and job opportunities throughout Southern Nevada, so please come out on September 14th from noon to 3:00 PM, and the entire community is invited. Thank you.
Thank you, and with that, we stand adjourned. See you all September 18th. Thank you.